Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. For those of you in person and for those who are watching us live streaming, and also for those attending in person at the Avalon School on Catalina Island. So, let's see. I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call and establish a quorum.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez?
Here.
Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
Student member Arroyo?
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have our pledge, and it will be led by our student representative from Poly, Ms. Riley Ignacio. Riley?
Put your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took action on the following items. On item 3.1, the Board voted 5-0 to approve the following actions. To approve the readmission of student ID numbers 201117419 and 201168025. To approve the expulsion of student ID numbers 201169333, 2011560768, 201146328. And to suspend the enforcement of the expulsion orders pursuant to Education Code Section 48917 and provide an opportunity for the students to attend another school within the district. The students will not be eligible to apply for readmission until after June 12th, 2025. And to approve the expulsion of student ID number 201145191. On item 3.2, the Board voted 5-0 to approve public employee appointments. And now, I will ask Dr. Sosa Valderrama for specifics.
Good evening. So, today, I'd like to announce the promotion of Dr. Lachandra Prelo, who will be moving from the Program Administrator of Student Support Services to the Director of Inclusion and Special Education in the Office of School Support Services. And I believe she's in the audience.
And I will pass it to Mr. Zaid.
All right. And I will also just the announce Assistant Principal Jennifer Kolb moving to Acting Principal at Mir K8. So, we want to congratulate Jennifer Kolb as well.
We'd like to extend our congratulations for these appointments. We are now at adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda as posted? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll have our Board Secretary take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now, we will have our student representative Riley Ignacio from Poly. So, we invite you to come to the podium. Thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Riley Ignacio, and I am the proud ASB President of Long Beach Poly Technic High School. I must begin with saying how truly honored I am to be here today, representing the flagship high school of Long Beach. Thank you so much for having me. Over my time at Poly, I've served various leadership positions, beginning with sophomore class president, Commissioner of Community Outreach, ASB Secretary, and most recently, ASB President. As I've grown into a campus leader, I've also involved myself in clubs and extracurriculars, holding positions such as OAFC Treasurer, Student-Athlete Association Commissioner, and being a part of the girls varsity soccer team. Poly is such a unique campus filled with diversity, tradition, and pride, and to say that I'm a proud Jack Rabbit is truly an understatement. This past fall semester was quite memorable for ASB and Poly as a whole, as we welcomed our new principal, Dr. Vega. ASB hosted multiple and successful events such as our Sadie Hawkins Dance, Homecoming Weekend Fair, Thanksgiving Drive, Holiday Toy Drive, Holiday Project, Blood Drive, and Winter Formal. Back in October, Head Coordinators Elena Castillo, Aria Luth, and Michaela Cowe hosted a successful Sadie Hawkins Dance, A City of Stars, with various community partners such as Chinitos Tacos and Cali Tea. As we kick off the school year, our Commissioner of Organizations, Sarah Neem, thoroughly organized Homecoming Fair at Poly.com with over 90 campus clubs participating, which was our conclusion of our 129th Homecoming Celebration. The following November, Commissioner of Community Outreach, Genesis Hernandez, partnered with the Long Beach Rescue Mission to donate canned goods and food items for those in need. In December, Poly hosted our Partnered Blood Drive with Cedar Sinai with Adrian LaQuin leading the way. We had over 82 pints of blood donated, which helps about 249 lives. Within the same month, Poly arranged our annual Toy Drive and Holiday Project, where we invited local elementary schools and our neighboring communities to help spread holiday cheer. This past January, Poly achieved our first collaborative Winter Formal dance, Pixie Hollow: A Night of Magic, with Lakewood High School's ASB. Our Winter Formal coordinators were able to create an amazing environment for both Poly and Lakewood students combined. As ASB has so much to be proud of this past fall semester, we have so much to look forward to. With such a bright semester ahead, Mr. Puth, our Activities Director, would say, "Poly's backbone," also known as ASB, "is prepared for it all." Just hours earlier today, ASB and Co-Commissioners of Athletics, Rosalyn Dix and Caleb Safotu, hosted our first signing day of the year. Poly has over 18 athletes signing to not only further their athletic careers, but also academic, with full ride scholarships. We truly are the home of scholars and champions. Honoring Black History Month, Poly's Black Student Union is getting ready to host yet another successful night market alongside ASB and other LBUSD Black Student Organizations. As we continue into our busy month of February, we're gearing up to host our Wellness Week with our Commissioner of Welfare, Ty Sanchez, in collaboration with Mr. Gray to promote positivity and community on campus. Following this, we kick off our spring semester this month with Club Rush, a lunchtime opportunity for students to find campus clubs and get involved. At the end of February, Poly's Drama Department will show multiple productions of our spring musical, The Little Mermaid, hosted in our very own Andy Osmond Auditorium. In March, ASB will host the 30th Annual Jack Rabbit Pageant, a talent show showcasing our seniors. Working hard behind the scenes, the J-Patch coordinators, Jamie Amaro, Joshua Choi, Olivia Garardo, and Sarah Neem are excited to produce a student-led show, A Jack Rabbit Is Born. With a total of 10 contestants and two emcees, this year's show is one you don't want to miss. Also in March, Poly is excited to continue one of our many traditions, PolyNorth. For those who haven't heard of PolyNorth, it's a humans relations camp co-directed by Mr. Schock and Mr. Puth. PolyNorth is designed for sophomores to break down barriers and go through various discussions, activities, and seminars to help build a more inclusive campus for when they return from camp. Over the weekend, our 10th graders are led by our senior counselors to address topics of focus such as communications, values, discrimination/stereotypes, and lastly, conflict resolution. After March, Poly's ASB will dive right into another school-wide intercultural fair on April 4th. This is an opportunity for students to participate in a carnival-like event that will showcase and honor each other's cultures and backgrounds through food, drinks, and performances. It truly is a year for our Jack Rabbits, as our girls varsity volleyball, wrestling, soccer, and both boys' and girls' basketball all bring home more league titles. Back in November, our girls varsity volleyball team also brought home the CIF championship and adding on to this title which they've had since 2010, bringing a total of 131 CIF Southern Section Champions to the home of scholars and champions. As I conclude, our students, especially the graduating class of 2025, truly have so much to look forward to. Poly's ASB is ready to shower our seniors with love and celebration with our first senior event being prom, hosted in the Anaheim House of Blues by a hard-working senior senate. Coming to the end of the school year, seniors also have the chance to participate in multiple events such as Grad Night, Senior Picnic, Grad Walk to Roosevelt Elementary, and of course, graduation in June. Thank you so much for supporting and lifting up our community, and as our Activities Director, Mr. Puth would say, "Go Jack Rabbits!"
Well, that was fabulous. Do we have any questions or comments? Yes. Ms. Lopez.
So, what are the plans after you graduate? Yeah. You are... I'm a Jack Rabbit myself, so very proud of, you know, the way you've represented the school, but what are your plans after you graduate?
Thank you. My plans are to attend a four-year university with a major in Communications and a minor in PR or Marketing. I'm not sure which college yet, but I'm still awaiting around three colleges, but I got into a pretty good amount. Thank you.
Holding those colleges close to the vest, huh? Okay, that's fun. I was actually curious... So, you talked about a number of things that have gone on at the campus as of yet, and I've talked too many times about all the great work that's happening at Poly, but also doing it in the midst of some construction.
Yeah.
It's a lot of movement, makes things a little tricky, but I'm curious, how have things been going on the campus, but more importantly, what has probably been the most fun event that you've attended?
It's kind of hard, but I think the most fun event that I've ever had was, or have been, Jack Rabbit Pageant. I touched on it a little bit, but it's something that none of the other high schools can replicate. It's something I've never seen before.
What about Mr. Ram at Milliken?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Ram?
No. Milliken has had competition for us, but the Jack Rabbit Pageant is just, it's amazing with the community. I love it so much.
I might be a little biased. I was in the Mr. Ram Pageant.
You don't say. We could not tell. Could not tell from that. Okay. So, what we'd like to do now is invite you up so we can... Oh, I know, one more thing before we invite you up for a photo, but would you like to acknowledge anybody who's here to support you?
Yes. My mom. And then, he couldn't be here today, but our Activities Director, Mr. Puth, I just always give thank you to him for all of my opportunities.
Great. Okay. So, at this time, we'll have you come up here with us, and we'll do photos.
Okay. Thank you.
look at our vision and action.
... times, actually, nationally. So, within this class, we have gotten like knowledge on how to operate cameras, set up lighting, and edit, and these are skills that we've used to compete in nationwide competitions, specifically like an organization called STN.
Student Television Network, or STN, is a national organization that connects students who are passionate about filmmaking, storytelling, and broadcast. It provides opportunities to grow, learn, and just compete through various workshops, competitions.
So, recently, me and another group of students have won four national awards. This school year, we've actually won two.
One for APSA, and one of them is a short film for Horror Fest, and it's been a rewarding experience to, you know, earn those awards, just for the first two films of this year.
Teamwork is everything. It could not be done without. Like, each person is very important. I've been acting since I was like three, so it's kind of like my thing.
And just being able to like compete with these other film students who share the same passion as me, it's kind of been like a really fun and engaging experience. It's not just a single person does it all. We all put in our own effort and contribute to like this like final product.
It's a very collaborative and detail-oriented process, but we always leave room for creativity.
It definitely takes a team. Each role is important.
Being able to make all these films, it's been a great experience, and I have good faith in all of us for the future.
So, for Riley, we understand this is a school night. You're welcome to stay if you'd like, but we understand if you need to go and work on homework or something. Let's see. Okay. So, now, it's time for public comment. We want to allow members of the public to make comments, but I understand, let's see, do we have anybody to speak on items on the agenda?
No. Was it she gonna agree something? Alana?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Before we move to public comment, our student board member has something to present to us.
I'll be sharing a little bit about the history of Black History Month. In 1915 is the genesis of National Black History Month. Historian and author and educator, Dr. Carter G. Woodson, established the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History to research, preserve, and teach about Black history and culture. He told an audience of Black students, "We are going back to that beautiful history, and it is going to inspire us to greater achievements." To highlight these achievements, Negro History and Literature Week was established in 1924, which Dr. Woodson renamed Negro History Week in 1926. Dr. Woodson made clear that learning about Black history should not be confined to the week-long celebration. He pressed for schools to use the time to demonstrate what students had learned about Black history throughout the year.
So, now, we would like to hear from the public. I understand, oh, we do have public comment on items on the agenda?
We don't have anyone on the agenda. All the requests were off the agenda, and we have 22 requests.
22. So, because we have so many people who would like to speak, we don't have enough time to hear from everybody, in which case, if we don't get to your name, you are able to provide a written comment that will be provided to the Board, because we have a total of 30 minutes, and each speaker gets three minutes. So, that only allows 10 speakers for public comment. Now, I'm going to check with my colleagues here. What we can do is limit it to two minutes and then allow for more people to speak, and that would give more of an opportunity.
I wanted to ask council, because I think we should give everyone the opportunity to speak. So, do I have to wait to motion for additional time when public comment is taking place, or can we just do it now?
No, you can do it by... Go ahead.
Yeah. We would have to have a motion before public comment starts, because if we're going to extend time, we need to know before we start.
Then, I will motion to extend public comment time to get through all of those who signed up, took their time to come sign up to give public comment.
We need a second?
We... If you want us to... If you want us to do that, then yeah, somebody can provide a second. It's not necessary.
Sure. I'll provide a second, but I would like to make a friendly amendment, and that would be that we limit the speaking time to two minutes per person. That'll give us almost everyone.
We will check with Ms. Lopez on the friendly amendment. Do you accept the friendly amendment to your motion?
I don't. I think that 10, 15 additional minutes, I think it's worth the time, given that individuals took time off their busy schedules to come to make public comment.
If we allow... If we allow three minutes for each person, it's going to be much more than 15 minutes, because we have 22 people.
An hour.
Yeah. So, we're looking at more than an hour. So, I will ask our Board Secretary... Unless there's any further discussion, I'll ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote. Member Lopez?
Mine was just a friendly amendment.
Well, but there's a motion on the floor. The motion on the floor is that we allow every speaker, and that's 22 speakers.
22 speakers.
Yeah.
So, I second the motion, and now, we're up for discussion, correct? And if we're going to do it, then we do it right. Give everybody the amount of time. Everybody, they took the time to be here, we love them too. But we're going to do it.
So, the motion on the floor is that we hear from... And we have 22 speakers?
21.
21? Okay. And then, we're agreed it's three minutes or... Three minutes. Okay. That's what we're voting on. Okay. I'll ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
Student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. So, we will get started. We will get started, and I'll just remind everyone, there's a three-minute limit. We have a lot of speakers, so for everybody to have a chance, if you could be respectful, thank you.
Rosa Palacios, please.
¿Cómo están? Soy Rosa, una de las maestras... ¿Una ayer? No. No. Gracias. Soy una de las maestras bilingües del distrito escolar, and I am here representing the Taod DI Immersion Task Force. We are a group of dedicated professionals who meet monthly to collaborate and support our dual immersion teachers across all DI, TK through eight. Our dual immersion program has been going strong for over 30 years and has expanded across the community. Other sites may be transitioning into becoming new sites in the incoming years. Our community is recognizing the significance and benefits of being bilingual and, in some cases, multilingual. Additionally, we are celebrating and embracing the diverse cultural wealth within our own communities here in Long Beach. For English learners, the district's dual immersion programs provide a safe space for students to develop fluency into languages while enhancing their academic achievement and cognitive skills. Learning in their native language supports our English learners by fostering bilingualism and biliteracy, as well as promoting positive attitudes towards diverse cultures and backgrounds, all while maintaining their home language. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Alcantara?
My name is Gina, and I am part of the DL Task Force. We are here to ask that we be considered active participants in the development of the district multilingual master plan of language learners. Stakeholders at each DI school come from all backgrounds and experiences as vested partners in the process of our insight will prove to be indicative of what our sites need to continue the success of Long Beach District's Dual Immersion Program. Currently, the success of the Dual Immersion Program is heavily reliant on the dedication and hard work of the DI teachers, or dual-language teachers, in TK through eight. However, the infrastructure of our program is not there, and if it is there, the vision, expectations, and goals of the district are not clearly defined and are transparent to all stakeholders involved. Conveying these observations and recommendations has sometimes proven challenging as we encounter resistance, blame, hesitation, and at times backlash. Furthermore, we frequently go unheard. So, we ask, when will our district make the commitment to ensure a complete and cohesive infrastructure of the DL program? What is the district's vision of the dual immersion, or the dual-language program in TK through 12? For example, should dual-language middle school students be allowed to meet the foreign language A through G requirement in middle school? Also, how will dual-language students be informed about obtaining a biliteracy seal for all of their hard work in TK through eight? If such visions are already in progress, when and how would the details be shared? What type of additional professional development will teachers need to fulfill the district's dual-language vision? If we don't have a master plan that prioritizes the dual-language program goals, we run the risk of new staff, both teachers and admin, making changes to the program without understanding the program. When we damage our dual-language program in the school, we damage the dual-language program in the eyes of the community and the children that it serves. What a master plan ensures provides sustainable program guidance, underscores the need for preparation, outlines the district priorities, provides a program accountability and evaluation, shows the committee the district's investment and commitment to the dual-language program, acts as a roadmap for future programs, so that we continue to be positive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paula Lane?
Good evening. I'm here supporting Rainbow Families Long Beach. It's a nonprofit dedicated to creating a safer and more welcoming space in LBUSD for LGBTQ+ students, families, staff, and teachers. Several of us are here today wearing purple and rainbow ribbons. On January 29th, the President of the United States issued an executive order that takes aim at our community by threatening illegally to put federal funding for districts who don't comply with their anti-LGBTQ demands. Debands range from banning LGBTQ+ inclusive curricula to banning schools from honoring and respecting the affirmed names and pronouns of trans and non-binary students. Lawsuits have already been brought by Lambda Legal and others to challenge this order. Many school districts and superintendents across the country have been releasing statements against these executive orders. We commend LBUSD for releasing a statement against an earlier executive order targeting immigrant students and students in mixed-status households. In fact, it is the first thing that you see when you go onto the LBUSD website. We enthusiastically support this statement and stand in solidarity with the families impacted. We ask the district to build upon that statement and explicitly affirm their support of LGBTQ+ students, staff, and caregivers within LBUSD. My Rainbow Family friends are here today to read some of the statements released by officials and districts around the country to demonstrate what LBUSD might develop. Rainbow Families is at the Board's disposal to help craft such a message. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ginny Komenda?
Good evening. My name is Ginny, and I'm here with Rainbow Families. Rainbow Families commends LBUSD for releasing a statement in support of immigrant and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement in support of LGBTQ+ students, families, and teachers. This is an essential protection for the well-being of our students. Last week... Last week, the superintendent of Alameda Unified School District released the following statement. Dear families, students and families alike have asked me about AUSD's plan for supporting LGBTQ students and families over the next four years. The concerns expressed generally focus on whether AUSD will continue to support its LGBTQ students and families if the incoming federal administration takes a less accepting stance over the next four years. My answer is an unequivocal and obvious yes. AUSD's values and policies will remain consistent with our past practices. As such, our district and school communities will continue to accept, welcome, and support its LGBTQ students, staff, and families, provide curricula that includes LGBTQ history as mandated by the state of California, provide curricula that includes healthy sexuality information for students of all sexualities and gender identifications in a developmentally appropriate way, provide structured elementary school curriculum that teaches students basic vocabulary about identity, gender, and sexuality, as well as lessons about the importance of inclusion, kindness, and respect, also in a developmentally appropriate way, provide gender-neutral bathrooms at our school sites, support gay-straight alliances at our middle and high schools and rainbow clubs at our elementary schools, provide professional development on supporting LGBTQ students to teachers and administrators, including understanding and using students' preferred pronouns. In addition to maintaining existing supports, LGBTQ liaison and licensed district counselor has developed new supports this school year, including "Let's Talk About It" modules that provide information on how to have constructive family conversations with students about a diverse range of topics, including immigration, body diversity, racism, sexism, antisemitism, and hate speech. This counselor has developed similar modules for our teachers, and every month we will host family forums on one of these topics and encourage teachers and families to engage in dialogue with the readers about it. We have reminders to our staff about administration regulations which emphasize that district personnel are required to address a student by the name and pronouns that are consistent with the student's gender identity. If you have questions and concerns about AUSD's policies, I encourage you to reach out. Federal stances and policies may indeed change. School districts, however, are under local control, and AUSD's policies, programs, and values will remain the same, and we will continue to focus on providing safe and equitable learning spaces for all. All of our kids means all of our kids, all of the time. We love this statement, and we hope that the board will consider some of the items within it. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help craft a message tailored to the families of LBUSD. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alex Friedman?
Hi, my name is Alex Friedman. I'm with Rainbow Families, and I'm a parent of two kids, a fifth grader and a second grader at Bixby Elementary. Rainbow Families commends LBUSD for releasing a statement in support of immigrant and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement in support of LGBTQ+ students, families, and teachers. This is an essential protection for the well-being of our students. In November, shortly after the presidential election, LBUSD's Board President Jackie Goldberg brought forth and passed several emergency resolutions, including one that notes a documented increase in anti-immigrant and anti-LGBTQ+ sentiment in the United States, and states that these narratives divide communities, elevate risk factors, and compromise mental health and school engagement. The resolution aimed to extend the school's nondiscrimination protections to family members of students as well as to employees and their families. The LGBTQ+ resolution also updates district policy with language about enforcing the respectful treatment of all persons to include gender identity and gender expression. Goldberg stated that lesbian and gay kids and trans kids and non-binary kids are really going to hear a lot of crap from the society as a whole, and we just want them to know that we have their backs. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help craft a message tailored to LBUSD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Annette Quintero?
Evening, my name's Annette Quintero, and I'm a teacher at Poly High School. I'm here to ask LBUSD to use its reserves to incentivize retirement as a means to address the budget deficit, reduce costs, and stave off potential layoffs. On January 17th, 2025, San Diego Unified School District issued a press release announcing the recent implementation of a supplemental early retirement plan to help address a projected $112 million budget deficit. The plan was so well-received by employees with participation exceeding initial expectations. To date, approximately 960 employees have opted in, surpassing the district's initial production of 755. According to San Diego Unified School District, that increased participation is expected to help mitigate the deficit and potentially avoid significant layoffs. As San Diego Unified School District's interim superintendent put it, "The higher number of people taking early retirement is another positive step toward our goal of delivering a balanced budget in June." This increasingly, this increased flexibility allowed us to reimagine our staff approach to better serve students and families. Similarly, similarly, in the 2024-2025 school year, San Francisco Public School District offered staff members age 55 and older who had worked for the district for at least five years a one-time incentive of 60% of their annual salary if they retired before the end of the school year. While the exact savings for the district remain unclear, news outlets reported potential savings of $113 million. It is also worth noting that Santa Ana Unified and other school districts have recently implemented retirement saving, or, excuse me, retirement incentives to cut costs and reduce the number of layoffs per tenure teachers. Retirement incentives are effective because they provide financial and budgetary flexibility. It is no secret that teachers with over 20 years of service are at the higher end of the salary scale. Offering a retirement incentive to these highly experienced educators not only recognizes their dedication and valuable contributions to our school communities, but also creates opportunities to retain and hire newer teachers at starting salary points. I urge the district to offer a robust retirement incentive that acknowledges the dedication of my more experienced colleagues. This is not only the right thing to do, but also the fiscally responsible course of action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ari Langman? Ari Langman?
Hi, my name is Ari Langman, though my students know me best as Mix L. I'm an LBUSD parent and a teacher, and I am non-binary. This week, I was heartened to see that LBUSD stood up for our immigrant students in the face of the xenophobic and anti-immigrant policies that have been coming from our federal government. I spent the first nine years of my career teaching English language learners, and I have thought of and feared for my students many times in the past several weeks. At the same time, I feel intense fear for my queer students, their families, and my colleagues. A recent executive order seeks to condition federal education funds on schools committing to erasing and silencing any mention of support for queerness and transness in schools. Much of the rhetoric focuses on what is being called radical indoctrination, or in other words, simply sharing information with and creating safe spaces for our queer students. How much more threatened does our current administration feel by the very existence of queer educators? I cannot express the terror that my queer students, parents, and colleagues are feeling. Supporting our queer students necessitates supporting our queer educators. While people in my generation may have seen one or two queer people on TV, those people were often stereotyped or the butt of jokes. We saw very few queer people simply living their lives as teachers, and doctors, and lawyers, and nurses, and engineers, and all of the things that we tell our students that they can grow up to be. This wasn't because queer people didn't exist, it was because we were erased and silenced, and in some cases murdered. My students have told me how important it is for them to see a queer teacher with a job, a family, and hobbies, living a arguably pretty boring life. Their trust reminds me why I keep teaching, even though working with children increasingly feels like one of the most dangerous professions for a queer person. Seeing queer and trans adults living happy, whole, out, and proud lives sends a message to our queer students that they too can pursue their dreams regardless of their gender identity or sexual orientation. I am lucky that I feel valued and respected and protected at my school, and it makes me a better teacher and a better advocate for my students. I'm asking the board to publicly issue a statement that voices LBUSD's support for our queer and trans community, our teachers, our students, and our parents. This sends a strong message to everyone, but especially our students, teachers, and parents, that in our schools, they will be celebrated, they will be valued, they will be protected, no matter what the world around them is saying. It tells our students that they are not alone and that we believe in them. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anjana Har, Anjana?
Can you hear me? My name is Anjana Harilal Bakta. I am also here part of the DI Task Force. We are here to ask for a dual-language stipend. It should have been given from the start. Going back 30 years, dual-language teachers were mostly responsible for bilingual materials, from translating to recreating what was provided in English. The founding dual-language teachers spent endless hours working on developing curricular materials. This is not a thing of the past. We continue to do this on our own, during our personal time without any compensation. Even now, we are still translating, searching, and recreating rigorous tasks to foster higher-level learning. Our English counterparts have all the materials readily available at a click of the button. That is not the case for dual-immersion teachers. Many of our documents still have mistakes or are missing altogether. We are doing our best to make the curriculum equitable and accessible to all our DI students. When our dual-language teachers are given combo classes, they have quadrupled the work. They are planning, translating, filling in the gaps in the curriculum that was not provided for both grades. Is there a plan? Should this be the case in our dual-language classrooms? Also, our collaboration time happens beyond the hours that are given for our workday. We need the opportunity to collaborate in all grade levels. For example, at Math QCI, the collaboration is needed to discuss academic language. Help keep these trainings pertinent to the master plan and relevant to the dual-language process. Both admin and teachers need training to help support the district's master plan and maintain the success of the district's dual-language programs that keep expanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Felisa Muniz?
Can you guys hear me? Okay, my name's Felisa Muniz. I am also here as part of the DI Task Force. So at LBUSD, we have never been offered a bilingual stipend, so during the Palm's Office Era, we could, we could, we could sign up or translate at an hourly rate. This, however, was not a stipend. We have to work more hours on top of the curriculum planning, and currently, our contracts include an MO for an additional bilingual assignment that pays up to $1,000 per teacher per year using the district's P-scale. The assignments must be approved by the principal, but many principals are unaware and do not know what qualifies as an additional bilingual assignment and do not seem interested. While our students are being granted more opportunities for becoming bilingual students and learners, LBUSD teachers are falling short. Some of us are multilinguals and have completed multiple credentials and have done, have gone above and beyond to, you know, get all of our certifications and get everything to be able to be in the classroom. So new teachers have to complete additional assessments and coursework, which increases the cost of our preparation. So college students and teaching programs are being encouraged to add a bilingual credential so that they can go and fill these jobs that are being opened in the districts. So examples of stipends at the DI sites are, so LBUSD is offering up to $5,400 on stipends for teaching in a bilingual classroom. Downey is offering $5,460 for a bilingual stipend. And then addition to the stipend, if they have a combo class, they're getting $9,173 for that combo class. And they're being compensated for their craft of their profession. Anaheim is getting $2,200. Given these considerations, it is essential to negotiate a stipend. If Long Beach District aims to uphold this positive reputation with stakeholders, it is important to compensate your DIL staff appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, Katie Jarnutowski?
My name is Katie Jarnutowski. I'm a speech therapist at Madison Elementary. I am using a speech generating device to communicate. While I can use my voice, 39 students at my school need to use technology to effectively communicate.
So I am a speech therapist, and speech therapists like myself assess to identify communication disorders, provide critical therapy to students of all ages, collaborate with families and educators across the campus to help our students use their voices. Due to significant staffing cuts by the, by OSS to the Augmented Communication and Assistive Technology Department, who set up, manage, repair, train, and support in the use of communication devices, some of my students have been waiting since September to receive their communication device. For others across the district, their apps are not working, and without anyone to prepare them, they do not have access to their voices. I ask the board members and the LBUSD community, what would you do if you or your child was without their voice for five months? I ask, what will LBUSD do to fix this problem and prevent it from happening in the future? As we negotiate, I'm hoping that the labor that it takes to ensure our students have their voices is taken into consideration when creating a workload calculator for speech therapists, and that there is adequate speech-language pathology TOSSAs to support augmentative communication, because this is vitally important, and right now, we are failing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alex Gordon? Alex Gordon?
Hi, I'm Alex Gordon. I'm a, I'm non-binary, my pronouns are "they," and I have two gender-diverse children in the district. I'm here with Rainbow Families, and I would like to commend you for releasing a statement in support of immigrant and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. That was necessary and important work, but it's only the start. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement for LGBTQIA2Spirit plus student, teachers, faculty, and parents. This is an essential protection for the well-being of our students. As you know, a student that does not feel safe is a student that is not learning. A teacher that does not feel safe is a teacher that is not teaching. The silence that you are allowing on this issue is creating a void. That void will be filled with bullies and bigots. We must speak, and we must speak soon. Last week, the superintendent of San Francisco Unified School District released this statement. As your superintendent, my job is to ensure that all students receive a high-quality education in a safe and supportive learning environment. Leaning into and celebrating our diversity helps all of our district's trans students and all of our LGBTQ+ students and families. While it is not yet clear how or when developments at the federal level might inform things here in SFUSD, commitment to our core values will not change. SFUSD board policy and California state law affirm the rights of our students and staff to learn and grow in a welcoming and inclusive atmosphere. I imagine that there are myriad of emotions in response to these possible changes and our present uncertainty. Please know that I will continue to collaborate with our local and state partners to support and protect the rights of our communities. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help you craft a message tailored to LBUSD. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sarah Ross?
Hi, my name is Sarah. I am a parent of a child that is going to a Long Beach High School next year. I'm here with Rainbow Families. We commend LBUSD for releasing a statement in support of immigrant and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement in support of LGBTQ+ students, families, and teachers. This is an essential protection for the well-being of our students, and on a personal note, I'd like to add that the district's current policy of allowing students to change their name and gender marker has been absolutely necessary for my child's mental health, and if that were taken away from my child, it would be absolutely detrimental. They wouldn't even want to go to school. Last week, Liz Sanders, Director of Communications for the California Department of Education, was interviewed by the San Francisco Bay Reporter. Sanders stated the following. Sanders stated the following. President Trump signed an executive order today that does nothing but require the Secretary of Education to determine what federal education funds can legally be rescinded as a penalty for teaching curricula that President Trump finds objectionable. We can give the Trump administration the answer right now: nothing. Sanders also stated the following. It is against federal law for the White House to dictate what educators can and cannot teach by threatening to defund essential public services for students. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help craft a message of support. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Castro.
Good evening, board members. My name is Grace Castro, and I'm an executive board member for TALB. And I'm here today to discuss an important issue: the need for a retirement incentive in our district. As we all know, Long Beach, along with many other districts in our region, is facing significant budget shortfalls. These shortfalls are a direct result of several factors: the expiration of COVID-19 relief funds, declining enrollment, and the high cost of living that makes it increasingly difficult for families to stay in our community. To address these challenges, other districts across California have taken steps to protect jobs and minimize layoffs by offering retirement incentives. For example, Landale put out a retirement incentive in November. Bellflower is offering 70% of final pay. San Diego Unified saw a 27% higher uptake than initially projected on their retirement plan, estimating 755, but a total of 965 employees submitted their paperwork. Santa Ana Unified introduced an incentive that resulted in approximately 160 employees accepting the offer. This trend of low enrollment isn't new. Our district has been grappling with this issue for years. But this year, more than ever, we must act decisively to protect the jobs of our personnel, both classified and certificated staff. It is therefore disappointing and perplexing that Long Beach has not included a retirement incentive in this year's bargaining proposal. I strongly urge the board to explore a retirement pathway for our employees. Other districts have found ways to offer incentives, so I ask, why can't Long Beach Unified do the same? The superintendent of San Diego Unified stated, "I am thrilled that we are able to honor the work of our colleagues with the retirement pathway that recognizes their commitment and service to our students. I sincerely hope that Long Beach will follow suit and do the same for our dedicated educators and staff." In addition to my remarks, I have brought with me today just a handful of the very many postcards that our members have filled out requesting a retirement incentive. These postcards come from teachers who are close to retirement and who, in an effort to protect jobs for newer teachers, are willing to leave their positions early. Others come from newer teachers who are concerned about job insecurity, already struggling to get by. These postcards represent the real concerns of the people who are directly impacted. They are from my area, which Eric Miller oversees, and I would like to leave them with all of you. I know Dr. Benitez has already received some of these in the mail. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucy Terrell.
Good evening. My name is Lucy. I have a student in elementary school in Long Beach Unified, and I'm here with Rainbow Families this evening. Rainbow Families commends LBUSD for releasing a statement in support of immigrant and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement in response to last Wednesday's anti-LGBTQ school-focused executive order and in support of LGBTQ+ students, families, and teachers. This is an essential protection for the mental and physical well-being of our students. Last week, the superintendent of Seattle Public Schools in Washington released the following statement that has been abridged for time. "Seattle Public Schools remain steadfast in our commitment to providing safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments for every student regardless of race, religion, national origin, immigrant status, gender identity, and sexual orientation. We have a constitutional obligation to educate all students. No matter where you're from, you are welcome here. We are keeping watch for new policies that may affect our district. As orders are introduced, we will work to provide as much clarity, calm, and stability as we can. Some of our students and families are facing hardships on their path to educational justice and living freely. The recent announcement regarding the removal of protected areas and possibility of ICE entering schools to deport students is deeply troubling to our district and community. In SBS, we respect every student's right to a safe school experience. We reaffirm that our schools are places of safety and belonging. We will not tolerate any action that disrupts our students' sense of security or their right to an equitable education. Furthermore, we stand firm in our commitment to protecting the rights of LGBTQIA+ students and staff, including non-binary individuals. The district remains steadfast in its commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment. Procedure 3211 states the district's unwavering support for gender-diverse students. We will continue to uphold these practices to ensure that every student has access to resources, support, and respect they deserve. We are currently reviewing our relevant policies and procedures with our legal team to ensure that these policies continue to provide clear information for students, their families, and SBS staff. We work alongside families, educators, and community partners to advocate for policies that protect our students and strengthen our commitment to their academic, social, and emotional well-being. Seattle Schools is a district that will continue to stand with every student and family, ensuring that our rights are upheld and their voices are heard. In solidarity, Dr. Brent Jones. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help craft a message tailored to Long Beach Unified."
Thank you. Claudia Rodriguez.
Hello, everyone. My name is Claudia Rodriguez. I'm here as a parent. I have a student at, where does she go to? Oh, Patrick Henry. Yeah. Which, you know, I want to say it's my first indoctrination, not only into a meeting, but also as part of being a parent in Long Beach Unified, and I can't tell you how proud I am of the work that the district has done, you know, to uphold not only its values about being inclusive, but also the things that we value as human beings, as, you know, part of being members of this society. You know, it makes me proud to look at this governing body and see how diverse it is. And aside from being a parent, I'm also an educator. I work at a community college, you know, so I also have that perspective, you know, of talking to students, and whether they're my DACA students or whether they're my LGBT students, and, you know, and them letting me know how important it is not only to have, you know, my support or my encouragement, but also that of the institution. And as a queer person myself, you know, it makes me feel reassured to go into work knowing that I have the backing of my institution, and it provides me with the security and the confidence to go in there and to do the work that I need to do. So, you know, other speakers before me have said the same message over and over, and I know that, you know, the work that you do is not an easy thing to do, but also, given the current political climate, I think that as, you know, as educated individuals, as people that are in positions of power, whatever that position it is, right now is not the time to vacillate and to, you know, wait and see about what's going to happen. I think that, you know, our values as American citizens are really in question, and we really need to be firm in pushing back against, you know, those kinds of policies, those kinds of ideologies that really want to take us to a dark place. So again, I applaud you all for the work that you're doing and encourage you to keep doing so and making sure that you address all members of the district. And with that, I want to say, reclaiming my time, I just always wanted to say that. Shout out to Maxi Wong.
Thank you. Juliette Ortiz.
Hello, I'm Juliette Ortiz. I am also a parent of two children in LBUSD schools. I identify as gender queer myself, and one of my children does as well. Rainbow Families commends LBUSD for releasing a statement in support of immigrant and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement in support of LGBTQ+ students, families, and teachers. This is an essential protection for the well-being of our students. Last week, the superintendent and board president of Montgomery County Schools in Maryland released the following statement. Dear Montgomery County Public Schools community, we recognize news about recent executive orders raises some concerns and questions about public education for Montgomery County students. All our children deserve a high-quality education that fosters both academic excellence and well-being regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, gender identity, immigration status, disability, religion, and/or any other identifying characteristic. We stand by our community and school system values, which include learning relationships, respect, excellence, and equity. They guide us every day and anchor us when navigating difficult times. We intend to use all legal means necessary to uphold them. We are committed to maintaining local authority over our curriculum, teaching, and learning, and we will fiercely support our teachers and staff as they implement our curriculum and policies. Education is a fundamental right guaranteed to all children and foundational to our society. A strong and thriving public school system is essential to the success, prosperity, and future of our communities, states, and nation. MCPC and the Montgomery County Board of Education will remain focused on our mission to provide the best, very best, education to each and every student. A supportive campus community improves students' attendance, their physical and mental health, their safety, and overall performance in school, and ultimately, it can mean the difference between life and death for LGBTQ+ students. We ask that you continue to do your part in supporting all LBUSD students, teachers, staff, and families. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help craft a message tailored to LBUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Davi Yap.
Good evening. My name is Davi Yap. I'm a teacher at Washington Middle School, and I'm here tonight to urge the district to adopt the Golden Handshake, the retirement incentive program that would benefit our teachers, our counselors, librarians, and also classified staff, and the long-term financial health of our schools. Right now, there is uncertainty. The district has not confirmed whether layoffs will happen, and that's leaving many teachers, especially the younger ones, in a state of anxiety. However, we have a solution. By offering a financial incentive for veteran teachers to retire, we can reduce the need for layoffs, preserve jobs for newer teachers, and stabilize our workforce, all while saving the district money in the long run. We know that senior teachers, after years of dedicated service, they're at the highest of the pay scale, while the younger teachers are at the lower part of the pay scales. And this would help with reducing overall payroll expenses. Other schools across California, such as San Diego Unified and Landale, have successfully implemented the Golden Handshake programs to address budget concerns without forcing layoffs. It's not about the numbers. It's about people. It's about the teachers who have dedicated decades of their lives serving our students and our communities. It's about the younger educators full of energy and new ideas who want to build their careers but are facing potential job losses. We have an amazing ELA teacher first year. We have an amazing veteran art teacher. We have an amazing PE teacher with a new mortgage and a kid on the way. It's about our community, and it's also about our students who deserve stability in their classrooms, seeing that they'll potentially have Ms. Ochoa again next year for Spanish, or they'll have Mr. Alba next year for ELA sixth grade. We have an opportunity to make a fiscally responsible and compassionate choice. By offering a Golden Handshake, we ensure that retirements can happen voluntarily instead of forcing layoffs that disrupt lives. Other districts have done it. Why can't we? I urge you to seriously consider this option. It's a win-win for our teachers, our students, and the financial future of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura Stringer.
Hi, my name is Laura Stringer. I am a teacher at Poly High School. I'm here also in support of retirement incentives in lieu of layoffs. We have a well-funded reserve, and as an example, if we offered a retirement incentive of $75,000 annuity, if we offered that and 100 teachers took that, it would be 7.5 million, which is a lot of money. But if five National Board teachers with 20 years or more of experience were not replaced, in 10 years, that 7.5 million would be recouped. I have an actuarial table with calculations for both replacement with a lower salary and without a salary replacement, including National Board teachers, who are our most-tenured and highest-paid certificated staff, of which I am one. I hope that the district will look at retirement incentives to reduce staff rather than the hearing model, which has financial implications as well as education and morale impact in response to the need to lay off staff. There are two firms that work with STIRS to develop these types of plans for districts. One is called Keenan and Associates, and the other is PARZ. I ask that you please review all the options available before deciding to lay off staff.
Thank you. Joseph Mueller.
Good evening. I'm Joseph. I'm a member of Rainbow Families. I'm also the father of a son who attends Longfellow Elementary. Rainbow Families commends LBUSD for releasing a statement in support of immigrants and mixed-status families in response to recent executive orders. We ask that you build upon that action and release a similar statement in support of LGBTQ+ students, families, teachers. This is an essential protection for the well-being of our students, our families, our teachers, and our community. Last week, the superintendent of San Paul Public Schools in Minnesota released the following statement. As a member of this community, I want to assure you that SSPS respects, affirms, and welcomes all students, staff, and family members. As a public school district, our policies and practices around racial equality, gender inclusion, and non-discrimination exist to ensure that all students are supported and have access to high-quality education regardless of their race, religions, national origin, immigrant status, gender identity, sexual orientation, socioeconomic status, or disability. All students deserve to learn in a respectful and inclusive environments where their identities are valued and contribute to their success in school and in life. In the words of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., "We must walk on in the days ahead with an audacious faith in the future." Our students, all of our students, are that future. Rainbow Families is at your disposal to help craft a message tailored to LBUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Tabari.
We'll move on. We'll get back to her if we see her in the room.
Dallas Emmerly.
I think he might be.
Thank you. Hi there, members of the board. My name is Dallas Emmerly. I am the Labor Relations Representative for CSEA, the California School Employees Association, the union representing your classified employees here. Myself and the administrator, Olivia DeLeon, are here tonight to talk to you about an issue affecting our folks. We're also very proud to stand alongside our brothers, sisters, and siblings in TALB in support of issues they're bringing to you as well. Tonight, what we want to make sure you know about is a case that came down recently from the Public Employment Relations Board. About two years ago, the district reduced the hours of an employee who was working six hours down to 3.8 hours. This employee lost their benefits and lost, you know, the income that they need to continue their standard of living, right? And this was not a legal action that was taken. So CSEA filed an unfair labor practice charge, and this charge was decided in favor of CSEA early last year. The district appealed, and once again, after the appeal, this charge has been decided in favor of CSEA by the full Public Employment Relations Board. in favor of CSEA by the full Public Employment Relations Board. The decision to reduce hours was wrong in 2023. It was wrong in 2024, and it's wrong now. And we're here tonight to ask that the district let this case be over, let the issue come to an end, and not appeal this decision any further. The amount of money that has been spent on this case could go to many better things. You know, we know there are a lot of issues that we're dealing with right now, a lot of things that we're struggling to find ways to fund. We're talking about school closures, right? And now, we do want to say is not the time to be putting this money into lawsuits that are ultimately for the purpose of stripping employees of the school district of their rights to bargain over critical subjects. Ultimately, as we've gone through this process, the lawyers of the district have made money, the lawyers of CSEA have made money, and whose foot the bill has been the taxpayers has been the district. So, we ask that if you want to learn more, please do reach out. Our members have actually been reaching out to all of you, as you've likely seen, by email over the past two weeks and sharing their support that the district not appeal this case. To date, by my count, 154 CSEA members and community members have joined in support to reach out to you, and we ask that you listen to them. And we ask that if you want to learn more, please do come meet with us. We'll be reaching out to all of you by email as well over the next couple of days. And if you'd like to schedule a time to meet, learn a bit more about what's going on with this case and why we're asking you to not appeal this case. We'll absolutely make ourselves available. Thank you so much for your time. We appreciate it. Have a great night.
Thank you. Allison. Allison.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for hanging in this long meeting tonight. President Craighead, members of the board, Dr. Baker, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Allison Muslinakar, and I am a current parent at Renaissance High School for the Arts. My child previously attended Marshall Academy of the Arts and Fremont Elementary. We're at an important and exciting moment in Long Beach's history. Mayor Richardson has expressed his vision for Long Beach to become a vibrant arts and cultural destination city, similar to San Diego, Seattle, and Sydney, Australia, and has already created an action committee specifically tasked with achieving this goal. In preparation for the 2028 Olympics, the city's Community Development Department is working with community partners such as Studio 111 and Placemaking U.S. and the Economics, Innovation and Entrepreneurship, and Design Departments at Cal State Long Beach to define and create arts and cultural experiences that express the unique character of our city as people from all over the world visit us at the 2028 Olympic Games. California voters have also made the inclusion of the arts in our children's curriculum a priority by passing Proposition 28, which the district has already begun to implement. The impact art can have on our children is immeasurable. Many people who have had an arts education and exposure to the arts in Long Beach already contribute back to this community through their continued involvement in the arts. Now is a great time for the district to take an active and publicly visible role in supporting and advancing the arts in Long Beach. By working with partners such as Long Beach Walls to provide murals on campuses throughout our city, the district achieves their own goal of community engagement defined in their strategic plan, Vision 2035, furthering the goals of Mayor Richardson, the City Community Development Department, and other institutions, organizations, and businesses working on redevelopment projects in preparation for the 2028 Olympics and beyond. A public collaboration with Long Beach Walls also enhances school campuses throughout Long Beach at no cost to the district. And LBUSD is showing their dedication to uplifting our children and our community by fostering an appreciation for what art can provide for all. As an LBUSD parent who is a lifelong advocate for the arts, I would like to thank you, the board, you, Dr. Baker, and especially Assistant Superintendent of Facilities, David Miranda, for pursuing a collaboration with Long Beach Walls.
I'm sorry, but your time is up.
I was done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sincerely.
Olivia De León.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Baker, cabinet members, and community members. My name is Olivia De León. I am the CSEA Administrator, and I'm proud to represent our Classified School Employees Association, Long Beach Chapter Two. We are also proud to stand side by side with our Taub brothers and sisters. As we assess and develop our relationship, I would like to share our current focus, a PERB decision that we have won on January 23, 2025. This is about a member's hours being reduced from six hours to 3.8 hours, and this was done unilaterally without following proper procedure. We won. We are asking for the board to direct administration not to appeal the decision. The PERB decision with legal fees, and the legal fees should be saved for students, staff, and facilities. We have members who have sent over 150 emails requesting your support. I'm sure you've seen them. We are counting on you as elected trustees to lead administrators to do what benefits your constituents. Wasting public funds on legal fees does not benefit any stakeholders. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Dr. Tabari. That concludes public testimony.
Well, I just want to thank everyone for coming. I know it's not easy to come and speak out in a public forum like this, so thank you for advocating for your students, your colleagues. We appreciate that. And now, we will move on to reports on superintendent advisory groups. We'll start with the Business, Budget, and Policy Development Advisory Group, Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, just very briefly, Madam Chair, just a reminder, I highlighted this at our January meeting, we'll have three, maybe four policies coming before the board at our next meeting for review and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we'll get back to the instruction report. Workforce Development, Mr. Miller.
No report tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez, is there a report for instruction and student learning?
Yes, there is.
Thank you.
Okay. So, LBUSD offered special education support services to teachers during the first semester and will continue through the second semester. In January, the Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Training was made available to all elementary and K-8 schools. This training provided, excuse me, tools to enhance safety and promote positive relationships, including verbal de-escalation training and safe, nonviolent student training. In addition, the Special Education and Inclusion Team in OCIPD, excuse me, kicked off mandatory special education training in January, and it will go through March. This training will be provided to all special education teachers, and it'll focus on providing an overview of disabilities and how they have been seen through history and the importance of inclusion in practical ways to support inclusion in various classroom programs and settings in the district. Just one last thing, just to point out that these trainings are offered to special ed teachers and to general ed teachers in CCT and co-teaching classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Student Outcome Focus Governance.
Yeah, we, this committee is still moving forward. Recently, our board chair went to a three-day conference in central California, just outside of Fresno, to meet with others that are pursuing this approach to governance for a district, and she's reporting back to us on what we're doing, and we're continuing to work on these issues moving forward.
And I believe, Dr. Baker, that members of our team are also at a three-day training to build our capacity in student outcomes?
Yes. Our Chief Academic Officer, Brian Moskovitz, our Director of Research and Student Outcomes, Dr. Monta Digal, and Hameen Lalani, also from the Research Office, are together attending a staff institute in preparation for further supporting the board's goals and guardrails and the monitoring calendar specifically.
Thank you. And I will include some of that information in my report this evening. Next on the agenda, we have our consent calendar. So, we'll need a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Yes, Ms. Lopez?
I do have a question on item, so 14.7, item four. If I can just get additional information on the contract with Clifton, Larson, and Allen for $691,335, and I guess my question really is, what specific audit is included in the contract?
Yes, this is for our annual financial audit as well as the bond audit, both audits and for a multi-year period.
So, and this is a one-year contract?
No. It goes through '27.
And then I do have another question. The agreement with Loyola Marymount University to provide internship and fieldwork experience to university students participating in the counseling program, will the interns be at selected high schools or in all high schools?
So, this is an agreement that allows for a master agreement, and then I think HRS will be placing students once the master agreement is approved. So, I don't know tonight, Mr. Samuel, if you can comment if it's all high schools, but it's actually a partnership agreement where it's through the Assistant Superintendent's Office in high schools, but the placements are made in Human Resource Services. So, we'll have to bring that back to you with Dr. On absent tonight.
And then just one more thing, just a comment. We are approving contracts that date back to August 2024, and I think it's maybe the third time that I'm bringing it up, if we can just be aware of that and maybe look to approve contracts before services begin.
Just for a point of clarification, some of the contracts that look like they're being dated back, they have contract language that allows the contract to continue. So, I can't cite specifically on the contract that's in this agenda, but definitely want to do what you said, and in some of them, there are reasons to continue the contract that's in place with the language, but we will, point well taken.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
And my comment is actually very, very brief. I just wanted, I didn't get to, well, I talked to this person briefly at the MLK Parade, but now it's currently on our agenda. I wanted to acknowledge the retirement of Sophia Griffey, principal over at, previous principal at John Muir, but more importantly, my English teacher from Stanford Middle School. Oh, congratulations.
Well, thank you for mentioning that. I would just like to point out on the Purchasing and Contracts Report, we had a couple of items for animal care hospitals, and that's for vocational training with our Long Beach School for Adults. So, a lot of great things happening with Long Beach School for Adults. So, without any further discussion, I'll ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member, a royal preferential vote?
Aye.
That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, we have our staff report, so I'll hand it over to Dr. Baker to get us started in that conversation.
President Craighead, may I request that we take a five-minute recess for everyone to take a bio break and also for our team to get prepared for the presentation before we change subjects?
Yes. Let's see, it is 6:30, if my eyesight serves me well. So, 6:30, if we can reconvene at 6:35, that'd be great. Thank you, everyone. It over you to get this conversation started.
Thank you. So, tonight, I have the pleasure of introducing the staff report, which is equitable grading in LBUSD. And we are so fortunate to have a team of those who are working on this, or leading this effort with us tonight. You'll hear from Mr. Samuels and Mr. Moraga, whose birthday is today. I might add that he's making a present, presentation on his birthday, and Mr. Madrigal. So, feliz cumpleaños to you.
And no trajo pastel para todos?
In English, por favor.
You'd like this. I said, where's the cake?
So, a few things to set the stage for tonight's presentation. Tonight is the first of our presentation about the implementation of the policy that was approved last spring. Like many districts who have studied their systems, things that are oppressive in their systems, things that cause harm, and things that allow students to succeed, we too, for the last several years, have been studying our equitable, our grading practices. And what you'll hear about tonight is a journey. It's a journey of thinking about likely 2,500 different grading policies that were implemented across our classrooms for many, many years, some of which gave students opportunities, some of which students had to figure out, what does the teacher want? What's the grading, what's the grading scale in my classroom? And tonight, you're going to hear about our journey, working with teachers and administrators and parents over time to develop an equitable grading policy and to implement it. One of the things that you'll hear us talk about, or that our team will talk about, is just around the change process itself, moving from learning about equitable grading into implementation, and likely some of the things that are referred to as an implementation dip in change policies or practices. Also, just want to thank the team that's here tonight. They represent multiple departments, and there are multiple departments that are responsible for this, and multiple people responsible for the implementation of equitable grading in LBUSD. So, tonight, you'll hear from the secondary schools office, the research office is involved, you'll hear from staff that have worked with OCIPD. The message that we want you to know is that there is shared accountability for implementation of this policy. This is not up to the secondary schools office, that is up to all of us, working with our teachers and our leaders for success of our students in the implementation of this policy. Also want you to listen in for the voice of those that are closest to this work. And part of the reason to speak to implementation and not wait until the end of the year when we have all of the student data to incorporate, is that this is an opportunity to learn and grow through the year, through the voices of teachers. And so, Mr. Samuels will make reference to working with teacher council, and Mr. Moraga, working with teacher council, and an ongoing project to have a place for teachers to express what's working well and things that they're seeing from their perspective and challenges that they might be facing. So, today's opportunity for us is really to tell the progress towards consistent implementation, that our students experience clarity, and that they experience more consistency than ever before, and aren't faced with challenge of gaming a system, or trying to figure out what an individual teacher wants in the system, or how grading goes, but actually to have a system that they can, they know they can rely on to create both hope and success and work in their academic subject areas in secondary schools. So, with that as a foundation, I will hand it off to Mr. Samuels for the next part of the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, Board President Craighead, board members, senior team, and our wonderful Long Beach Unified School District. I'm here to get us kicked off with our team that's going to come and share with, share before you today about our implementation efforts. On March 20th, 2024, that was a significant day for Long Beach Unified School District. It marked the adoption of our equitable grading policy, and that was a decisive step in our commitment to our students, because this policy represents a shift, and it represents a shift in our system to address longstanding inequities that have adversely affected students for many years, particularly students of color. So, it's a policy that requires us to really work hard to align our grading practices across our system, so that we can ensure that all of our students experience equitable grading, no matter which classroom that they're in. And this policy, as we know, is an outgrowth of our excellence and equity policy, and both of which are not just policies, they're actions designed to create real, meaningful change for our students. In Long Beach, we're not just, as the students say, talking about it, we're being about it. Before the adoption of this policy, the likelihood that three students in three different algebra classes at the same school, having three different experiences as it relates to grading, was very high. But today, with our policy, that likelihood has been reduced significantly. So, this policy has leveled the playing field, it's promoted fair and consistent grading practices across our district. And tonight, our purpose is just to focus primarily on the work that has been done since March 20th, to share what we have learned as a cross-departmental team, and to share what our next steps are for the remainder of this school year. And as Dr. Baker shared, this has been a collaborative cross-departmental effort with our secondary schools office, our Office of Research and Student Outcomes, the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, our Chief Academic Office, and of course, the many voices of our teachers. And so, I have the pleasure of introducing just some of the members behind the scene. There are some folks who have really been doing the heavy lifting as it relates to this work. And so, you know, on our team, two of whom are going to be presenting to you today, we have Gonzalo Mariaga, who's going to present along with Salvador Madrigal. Also on our team is Dr. Esther Death, who's in the OCIPD. We have Dr. Benita Shandishaker, who's in our research office, and we have Ms. Katie Maldonado, who's also in our office. And so, we definitely want to express deep appreciation for these individuals and the hours, countless hours that they've been working to help us with these implementation efforts. I'm going to kick it over to Mr. Salvador Madrigal, and he is going to get us started.
Thank you, Dr. Baker and Mr. Samuels, for that introduction and setting the stage. Good evening, board members, senior team, and to our Long Beach Unified School District community. I appreciate the opportunity to engage you in the district's efforts and journey to implement the equitable grading policy that the board approved on March 20th of last year. Your vote of confidence to help carry out such an important task is greatly appreciated. By establishing a district grading policy, you as board members, along with district leadership, committed to ensuring consistency, fairness, and accuracy in grading practices to help support student learning and overall academic success. That commitment has been at the forefront of the rollout efforts you will hear from our team today. The LBUSD grading policy is grounded in the core beliefs of our district's excellence and equity policy. The grading policy is a transformative practice that the excellence and equity policy challenges our system to bring about, to help promote successful outcomes for all students in our district. As our district continues to pave the way to make Vision 2035 a reality, I want to highlight that academic excellence and equity align with aspects of our system and adult portrait. The system portrait calls for an equitable system focused on excellence for all, and the adult portrait calls for equity-focused change agents. The last time we presented this timeline to you, in front of you, our team provided you with a comprehensive scope of an almost two-year journey to collect feedback from students, parents, teachers, and site administrators. However, I would like to take this opportunity to indicate that prior to this grading policy, as you know it, and as Dr. Baker mentioned, our district entertained different ways to attempt to bring a more equitable academic experience for our students. I recall when Dr. Chris Lund was Assistant Superintendent of Research, and a pilot group of schools were invited to examine the alignment of grading practices. At the time, I was a principal at Stevens Middle School, and I remember our staff analyzing grade data and reading articles like "The Case Against the Zero" by Douglas Reeves, and looking at the work of Thomas Guske from his book, "On Your Mark: Challenging the Conventions of Grading and Reporting." The work of these two researchers led to rich philosophical conversations around the complexity of grades and the importance of great alignment across our school, let alone the district, to prevent the possibility of grading discrepancies based on subjective and non-research-based measures. The lessons learned through this pilot have informed what eventually led to the basis and foundation of the grading policy as we know it today. Fast forward to our book study sessions with teachers in the fall of last school year. As we discussed Joe Fowman's book, which is on that timeline, "Grading for Equity," some of the teachers present indicated they remembered their school sites at the time participating in those grading, in that grading pilot that I'm talking about. They shared the lasting impact that experience had on their career as it relates to grading students, and how it was a major reason why they answered the call to join the book study and be supporters in this important work. In our quest to learn more about equitable grading practices and implementation efforts, in early May of last year, our chief academic officer, Mr. Brian Moskovitz, and I were invited to join the California Collaborative hosted by Sanger Unified in Fresno. There, we learned about the efforts of many districts throughout California that had already implemented or were in the process of implementing their own grading policies. It was a timely and pivotal experience to listen to lessons learned from the field, and what considerations were highly recommended and discouraged for a successful implementation. There was much, there was much validation to this work since researcher and author Douglas Reeves was present and provided guidance and words of wisdom from his expertise around the subject. In the remaining slides that I will cover, my goal is to illustrate how tenants of the grading policy were discussed and feedback was requested prior to implementation. From the start, we have understood that a successful implementation would require collaboration, feedback, and careful consideration of those that would be most impacted by this work. To that end, we have engaged educators from across our district, teachers, department heads, curriculum leads, administrators, to collaborate in the development of the guidelines to support the policy. I would like to take this moment to thank the different stakeholder focus groups that provided feedback, again, over a two-year span, that resulted in the creation and refinement of our uniform grading guidelines. Our efforts to collect feedback from middle school, high school, and K-8 school teachers across our diverse district is shown here. I want to highlight that the teacher input was based off of the subject taught, to ensure we collected perspectives from a wider scope of teachers. So, in this visual, you have math teachers, you have English teachers, special ed teachers, high school, middle school, all designed and selected from your respective district zones. During the last two months of the school year, our team engaged high school, middle school, and K-8 principals on the importance of the rollout, and provided them with resources and next steps to use during their staff meetings and teacher release days. During this time, the key themes of uniform grading and reporting guidelines were reviewed. So, this is what we refer to as tight but loose considerations. So, making sure that there was clear communication to families through syllabi, retakes and revisions, late work, makeup work, and our grading design, making sure that it was clear that teachers had to select a grading scale, one or the other, being clear around homework assignments and missing assignments. I will now turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Gonzalo Moraga, Director in our Secondary Schools Office, so that he can go into detail as it relates to the implementation efforts of the grading policy guidelines.
Thank you, Mr. Madrigal. I'm here to present on the actions we have taken as a district since March 20, 2024, when the grading policy was submitted to the board for final approval. During this part of the presentation, I'm going to outline and give an overview of the work multiple departments, offices, and staff have done in order to implement, guide, and provide professional development for the grading policy. In the last few months of 2023, 2024, there were many actions taken to inform and provide support to our schools on the grading policy. I was fortunate to have been the principal at McBride High School during that time when this work was being done. So, I'm very familiar with the steps we took at the site level for the early implementation of the policy. In April, MMS released a staff grading policy video, as you can see on the chart, for administrators to preview and begin preparations to share with staff. In addition, MMS created a student and parent grading policy videos. And in April, employee relations met with TAL to address union and in April, employee relations met with Taub to address union concerns. We continue to receive ongoing and valuable communication from Employee Relations Services and Taub regarding the grading policy. In April and May, grading policy implementation plans during staff meetings in preparation for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year took place. And I was, uh, participating in those discussions, like I said, as a high school principal. That's where the departments were making decisions regarding the policy, regarding their grading schemes, and how they were going to implement it and, uh, be reflected on their syllabus. In July and August, we saw minimum day staff days for PD and beginning of the year PD, uh, and a PD day used to support the implementation of the grading policy. In August, we had a two-hour paid PD for secondary school teachers on campus grading and reporting implementation, which I will give a little bit more detail, um, in the presentation. And we also want to emphasize that during all these, uh, trainings and meetings and implementation, we were focusing on what Mr. Madrigal, uh, referred to has the key themes such as communication, retakes and revisions, late work, and makeup work. In this slide that's in front of you, we will focus on the timeline of actions taken over the summer, beginning of the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and that we're currently doing as we are ending semester one and beginning semester two. In July twenty twenty-four, the grading policy website resources were introduced and shared. As mentioned earlier, a Canvas course designed to give a teacher's syllabus support to align to the guidelines also happened. It was very well attended by teachers as they were planning the start of the year. In both November and now just in January, we had a very, uh, good group of teacher council, thirty-one teachers total, representing high school, middle school, and K-8 schools. And we have ongoing discussions and open discussions regarding the grading policy, and they are giving us feedback on what to do as next steps. From the work done in November, we are working on a document with clarifications and adjustments as we enter second semester. We also have a standing grading policy focus group which gives advice and feedback with input of teachers and administrators. We really want to thank these teachers and administrators for giving us important feedback because the best feedback is the one that comes directly from sites and by those, by those that have firsthand experience with the implementation of the policy. So that's our focus. In this slide, I want to highlight, um, to you some resources that are readily available. Uh, these are for to clarify, to give information to anyone that wants to know more the grading policy. The one on the left is a very comprehensive video in its narrative of the work behind creating the policy and why it's important and some of the implementation of it. In the middle, you have the flyer that outlines the equitable grading and LBUSD for middle and high school students, which was mailed to all LBUSD families during the summer as part of the district's welcome message for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um, this is a copy of it. In case you haven't seen it, it is in English. Yeah, you have it right there in front of you. Perfect. It is in English and in Spanish. The one on the right, it's the website link to all the resources and information also, and it's for, uh, our entire community. We're going to play a snippet of the video that's linked there on the policy. So let's wait for that video to load.
Mr. Moraga, real quick while it's loading, so the flyer is also on the website?
Yes.
Okay.
On March twentieth, twenty twenty-four, the LBUSD Board of Education approved Board Policy Five One Two One, Grade slash Evaluation of Student Achievement. This policy is grounded in the Excellence and Equity Policy Zero Four One Five, which was approved in twenty twenty-one with the purpose of developing a uniform grading system that is designed to create a consistent and fair system across the district. This policy aims to ensure all students can thrive and succeed regardless of their background. Development of the policy. Over two years, representatives from various departments came together to develop the equitable grading policy and implementation guidelines. Over one thousand teachers, students, and parents helped to inform the policy through participation in thirty-six study and focus groups. Data from their focus groups was collected and used to inform the equitable grading policy that was approved by the LBUSD Board of Education. Why a grading policy? Equitable grading practices ensure all students are evaluated fairly and consistently, motivating them to engage in learning. The guidelines ensure consistency across all schools, grading based on student knowledge and the mastery of skills. Key guidelines include grading based on knowledge and skills, clear communication of grading practices that ensure a supportive learning environment, multiple opportunities to demonstrate proficiency, changing the F grade to fifty percent to make it equitable across grade bands. This approach helps students advocate for themselves, develop a growth mindset, and succeed academically. You can find the full policy and more information at lbschools.net/grading.
Thank you. Slide seventeen is there for you to take a look at the, what it looks like for Canvas. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, over the summer, we offer an optional two-hour paid course to all secondary school teachers. And we're happy to report that one thousand five hundred and eighty-six teachers enrolled for, for the course, and then nine hundred and sixty-four completed the course. That's sixty-one percent of those that enrolled completed the course. So there was a high demand by teachers to learn about Canvas. In Canvas is where, uh, all the grading schemes are located, where the syllabus is located, and also where students, parents, guardians, and Canvas observers can monitor student grades, uh, from the portal. What are our learnings? What, what, what have we learned so far since we implemented the policy? And I want to refer to this slide. Some of the most important learnings since the implementation of the grading policy has been the need to have an ongoing and open communication with sites and with those that are implementing the policy, as I mentioned earlier. Is that, is also has been highly important to answer questions as they arise and provide prompt feedback. For example, as noted in this slide, we had a teacher Zoom session to answer technical questions regarding Canvas and quarter one grade reporting early in November, right at the beginning, because there was a need for that, for clarification. Through the secondary teacher council, we had feedback on potential adjustments and clarifications to the policy. The focus group with teachers and principals also gave us important feedback from multiple perspectives. Ongoing support and professional development for our site administrators is also essential. If you note there, in January and February, which is going on right now, actually, I did a training this morning with the Assistant Principals for High School. We are training them, providing support and ongoing professional development on how the campus admin features are there to support the equitable grading practices. And we will continue to work with administration because they're a key element in the monitoring and providing support to teachers inside, insights. In January, OCIPD also included information on the grading policy at their department Zoom meetings. And any future document on potential adjustments and clarifications will be made with the information, ideas, and feedback given by OCIPD, Secondary Schools Office, research, and very importantly, with teacher and administrator information from their groups. Please feel free to reach out to our Secondary Schools Office if you have any questions about this presentation, and I will now hand it over to Mr. Samuels, who will do an overview on the next steps. Thank you.
Um, excuse me, can we feel free to ask questions now before we go to next steps?
Or are we going to come back to Mr. Moraga and Madrigal, Mr. Samuels?
We are.
Okay, so I'll.
Well, we'll, I can just give a quick next steps and then we can have questions or?
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if you preferred for us to ask the questions while they were up here or to wait until after you, but I'll, I'll wait. Thank you.
Two minutes. So very quickly, um, uh, Mr. Moraga, uh, talked about a document that's going to provide clarification and adjustments. Um, our, our team, in collaboration with the other departments that were mentioned, um, our plan is to try to have that ready for teachers, to go out to teachers within two to three weeks. Um, and so we're hoping to have that. We've, we've taken a learning stance, and there's so much that we've learned, um, throughout this process. And so that document is going to be a reflection of what we've learned and, um, providing some clarification. Um, we've also heard from our teachers about instances of, uh, misalignment across our departments. Um, and so in response, we've analyzed, you know, some of the practices that we've been engaging in, and we've worked, we're working, I will say continuing to work to improve that alignment across our departments so that there's consistency, um, so our teachers are experiencing, um, a consistent, um, message and experience. Um, as, uh, Mr. Moraga, um, mentioned, we have provided our administrators with some training to ensure that they're able to effectively and consistently monitor the implementation of the policy. Um, and, uh, we are continuing to work on that. Uh, uh, we, we have some plans for our next round of, um, admin meetings, uh, to ensure that there is more training, not just the training that we've just had, but, uh, some additional training as well. Um, and then the continued engagement with teachers, um, as you have heard, is, um, something that we're passionate about, that we will definitely continue. Um, and then our ultimate, um, goal or plan, if you will, after all of the learning, after all of the feedback sessions, is to, um, put together some, we anticipate some adjustments that will be implemented for next year as it relates to our grading guidelines. And so, um, so that in a nutshell are some of the next steps that we have at the moment. Um, I'm going to ask, uh, Mr. Moraga and Mr. Madrigal to, um, stand by because we know you have some questions. So now we are ready for some questions for, uh, everyone.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Samuels. Let's get into this, Mr. Moraga and Mr. Madrigal.
Let's go.
Um, so let me, let me just, uh, start off by saying I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean into my appreciation for the presentation and the work, uh, right, that, that's involved, so. Um, I, I also want to reiterate, I am a strong supporter, if you all remember when this came before us. Uh, so you have all of my support, uh, in, in championing these efforts. That being said, um, I, I remember when we, um, it wasn't just one meeting, right? It was multiple meetings, uh, where you rolled out, uh, this idea, showed a strath language, um, anchored it in some of the values, uh, around excellence and equity that, that you framed tonight's discussion around. So, uh, I, I want to make sure that I highlight the consistency with which this, uh, was conceived uh, and ultimately how it's being implemented. And I recall three very important things in those initial subs- and now subsequent discussions. One, uh, that the intent behind this, uh, policy, uh, as I heard it, as I understand it, and, and I think we got a version of that, is to, uh, eliminate and undo harm, uh, that, uh, grading, um, can have on students. Uh, right, that, that's the anchor, right, that we want students, uh, to do their very best. Uh, but we also want to eliminate those systems and practices that were inhibiting, preventing, uh, students, uh, to achieve their very best. And so the focus, as I understood it, was always on the learning. Uh, the grades are a reflection of something, uh, they're not in the abstract. So I remember clearly the value, uh, here was around eliminating those things, those practices and systems that harm students. And, Mr. Samuels, uh, to your point, in particular, are students of color. But I want to also include our emerging bilinguals, uh, in that, our students with disabilities, uh, right? Our most historically underserved, uh, students. Second, um, is that there was very clear, um, parameters around, that's the value, the intent. Um, how will we achieve that? And I heard these three things again tonight, and it was, our goal is for consistency in grading across grade levels, across schools, across subject. Um, transparency and fairness, right? Those were three values, three principles, I think, that anchor the work moving forward. And the last, as I understood it, and you're affirming that, is that we would take this year as a year of learning. Uh, right, because there, we heard about concerns about, well, how is this going to roll out? We're just gonna sort of jump into this, you know, within three months? And so I appreciate the, the summary of the process of implementation that includes this big component of learning and then ultimately adjustments. So here's what I want to get at. Notwithstanding, uh, and I'm glad that President of Taub, uh, is here, notwithstanding the potential, uh, and we've heard some of this, I've heard from students, teachers, parents, the potential, um, ideological and or philosophical opposition to this. Uh, I'm not going to get into that today. Um, I want to hear a little bit more, um, hoping anyone, uh, in our, on our team here can talk about it. Um, some of the concerns that we've heard about the implementation, uh, of the policy. And I'll, and I'll lead in terms of what's been shared with me. I visited schools, uh, in the fall, and we got some emails from math teachers at high schools, uh, from students from particular schools. We heard some concerns from our previous school board member, um, student school board member. So, um, there are still some, because I'm hearing about it. I think key, uh, misunderstandings or misinformation, uh, about how this is being implemented. Uh, and I'll, and I'll highlight, because I think we have an opportunity here, as we did last year, to provide a counter narrative, uh, to how potentially this grading policy is also being weaponized against those very students that are meant to, uh, be helped, uh, by this policy. So, so, uh, vibes out there on our school sites around the dilution, we're diluting grades by this policy. Uh, vibes out there about how it disincentivizes students from turning things in on time. Uh, vibes out there about, well, an A is not really an A if we're going to allow students, uh, to make up, uh, assignments. And what's the point of me going after an A if anyone can get an A, uh, in the class? So I'll start with those because I think what I'm hearing, uh, is still based on some misinformation uh, and some misunderstanding about ultimately, uh, what this policy is doing, again, with learnings and adjustments. So can we start with that, uh, right? And, and I'm sharing again from what's been shared with me, that I think there's still this narrative out there that somehow this is providing an unfair advantage, uh, to, uh, students that are going to turn in all their work late, uh, that we're going to get three hundred late assignments the day before grades are being turned in, uh, that, uh, you know, workload issues that we've heard of, uh, and this belief that somehow the merit of the grade is not the same, uh, anymore. So any, any, anything that you can share, that we can have a conversation about, I think this is a good space, uh, if, if we're, if we're still adjusting and learning, uh, from the implementation of it. I'll start with that.
I can kick us off, um, like, because I think one thing that, that, first of all, thank you, Dr. Benitez. Um, our team will concur that we've heard, uh, as, you know, as you can imagine, gathering the voices of all of our teachers, or as, I should say, many of our teachers. Um, those are some of the same things that we've heard as well. Um, when it comes to the dilution of grades, uh, one thing that we have to remember that the policy calls for is grading for mastery. And so when we talk about grading for mastery, we're talking about grades that represent the knowledge and skills that kids have as it relates to the content. Prior to our policy calling that out, uh, students weren't always graded for mastery. So for example, um, you know, and even as a classroom teacher myself, I may have been guilty of it. Um, sometimes kids were given extra credit points if your parents show up at school night. Um, but that's not a demonstration of mastery for a particular content. Um, there, there, there are instances where. There are instances where students are, points are taken away if you come to class late, if you don't talk enough, and those are really effort grades, participation grades. And so the heart of this policy is really focusing on, how much do students understand the content that's being taught? And so when you look at the policy, the intent is that the items that are graded are focused on what students know. And it's not, it's gonna take us away from some practices that may have existed in some of our classes where behavior was being graded. You know, even to the point where sometimes, unfortunately, if a kid was, you know, maybe not a top student, and may have had some challenging behaviors, sometimes that showed up in their grade. And so, so grades will, if grades are quote-unquote inflated, then that means that we are showing what kids actually know, and we're no longer grading kids on things that are disconnected from the content. And so I think that's very important to note, and that's what we're setting out to try to do.
Anything you all wanna add, Mr. Madrigal, Mr. Moraga, or any members of the team?
Okay, thank you. So, thank you for the question, Dr. Benitez. As you asked your question, it reminded me of the experience, again, that I talked about with working with other districts that have been doing this work. And they were very clear in saying, get ready, embrace the messiness of it, embrace that it's gonna take time to shift behavior, shift actions. But the key takeaway that I walked away from our time together is to put values before policy. So as we're talking about our excellence and equity policy, we're talking about Vision 2035, the consistency in grading, we want to make sure that we are dealing with data that is accurate. Think of, think of the many times in which we have, we're analyzing data, can we honestly say that it is, it's good data? Is it flawed data without having the safeguards of this grading policy? So in terms of the feedback that we're getting, whether it's a champion for this policy or a critic of this policy, we welcome it because it's the noise in the system that allows us to consider all options, consider all opinions. And there's always that moment of reflecting and saying, mm, if I could redo this, we would do it this way. So while I'm proud of the work that the team has done, I'm proud of the work that administrators at the school site, principals, APs, are doing with their teachers, and specifically teachers. The fact that they had to learn a policy as if they were drinking water from a fire hydrant to enter the school year, just an honest applause for them for being ready to stand up to something that, it's a massive shift in our system. But I, but we feel that our system and our kids are in a better place, given that there's at least that transparency across the board.
Yeah. And to add to that, I think that the work that I've been leading with teacher council and then also working with the team on the focus group has been around operational. Like you mentioned about the workload, our teachers are extremely hardworking. And just the fact that, I noted earlier, that nearly a thousand of them signed up for an optional course over the summer to learn about the grading policy and be ready for the school year, I think speaks volumes too, about their readiness to work and then to meet the demands of this new grading policy. So we are finding things that are very content-related. So in this document that we're working on, what a two-week late policy may look like in an English classroom, maybe different what it looks like in a PE classroom, maybe different what it looks in CTE, VAPA classrooms. So that's what we need to make the adjustments. So it is a huge amount of work, but that's what we need to bring specificity. Also, how does it affect students with IEPs, right? How's the late work? How does that work? So all those questions are being addressed because they're coming from the field, right, the ones that are practicing. Also, technical questions about where's the syllabus supposed to be? How does a grading scheme look like in Canvas? Where do I put the percentage? Where do I put the rubric? How do we account for the missing at a 45%? How do we have, you know, the percentages and the grade reporting? So all those operational things is that what we need to address in the moment and that where we need to make the adjustments.
Perfect setup, because my follow-up question was around, actually, I'll separate them out, I don't wanna conflate these two, but one question is around the effort and work that's going into it from a teacher's perspective, right? Because there were concerns around, we're gonna get all these late assignments. And so I don't want to discount nor dismiss all the effort that's being made from a teacher's perspective to implement this culture-shifting policy, as you've shared. So just a question around what kinds of support, in addition to the professional development opportunity we are providing for teachers that may have had, you know, 30 or 40 papers come in last minute? And/or support that we're providing for teachers where we may have, I'll say it, you were honest, Mr. Samuel, about, you may have been one of those teachers, maybe some students gaining the opportunity right now, right, to either not turn in assignments or turn in assignments after the fact. So that's question number one. And question number two, and it's related to that. If, again, the intent behind our policy was to undo harm with our most underserved students, in terms of practice, policy, how are we accounting for, having considerations and conversations for our students with disabilities that need accommodations, that specific things are written into their IEP? Maybe there's a question for you too, Dr. Sosa Valderrama. So what's a word on the street from our sped teachers, from our students with disabilities, from our caregivers with students with disabilities in terms of the impact and/or implications of the policy, not just on IEPs, but, you know, on any accommodation that now we have to think maybe potentially differently about? So two questions there.
I think that with the question about the late work, so teachers themselves are doing adjustments, and I think the questions that are coming to us will be reflected on the clarifications that were coming up. So for example, the grading policy does not take a deadline away, okay? It just moves the deadline for two weeks. So students are still be held accountable to a deadline. So that there's not an ongoing or never-ending sense to that. So what some of the advice has been given is, for example, to do assignments that are done in class as classwork. So there's, you know, there's no two week after that because it has to be turning the day off. So a lot of teachers are doing that, that way it's not going home, and then they don't turn it in, and now it turns into two weeks. So that's something, like, very quick that I can think of that they have done.
So are we talking about potentially the elimination of homework?
I didn't say that, but I said that teachers, in order to have the deadlines be met, they're doing them in the classroom.
Equitable homework policies is what I'm reading here, Mr. Moraga.
I'll leave that up to the board. The second one is that when there are projects that are very big in nature, that are multiple-step projects, that have certain components, is that, you know, one of the adjustments could be now that there's a grade given for the entire project and not piecemeal it with certain pieces in it. That way, it's an overall project, that that project is held to the two-week extension. So those are some shifts and adjustments that can readily be done, and the students still be held accountable for the entire project, for every part that's in there.
I love that last example, right? So it's not an all or none. You know, if it's a writing assignment, you know, your introduction some points, an outline some points, your conclusion some points, some summary, and then you get the points for the final draft.
Exactly. You got it. That's exactly what the recommendation is.
And then on the question around IEPs and students with disabilities.
I can speak to the work that we are doing, and then, or Dr. Sosa Valderrama, if you wanna speak to that.
All right. So we did, in collaboration with OCIPD, because they are the ones that provide all the training and resources to our special education teachers and our gen ed teachers that work with students that have disabilities, did develop some guidelines on grading students with disabilities. So that includes IEPs and 504s. That provides specific information on the role of the teacher or the case manager, defining what is an accommodation, you know, how to use that universal design for learning and individualizing the needs of the student, and then also what is a modification. So there's a difference between both of those. So that was provided to teachers in September and then, again, revised in December. And as we've been hearing back from parents or teachers, but specifically from parents, sometimes we still don't have the same understanding of what is in the resource guide. So we have asked our Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, there's a team specifically that works with inclusion and special education, to provide technical assistance and supports to teachers as they're learning to navigate through the process.
Thank you. And those are the clarifications that are being made in our document. Thank you.
Very quickly, what feedback are we receiving from teachers regarding the implementation of the new grading policy? And maybe share some of the challenges that they're facing?
I'm thinking about the topics that are gonna be in this clarifying document. So for example, what is a major assessment? Is a question. Is it a unit exam? Is it a chapter quiz? Is it something that they do, a project? So we're defining that. Again, what does, because those are the ones that are subject to retakes, right? The missing assignments, you know, the 45%, those questions are coming up. Questions regarding, like I said, content-specific. The ELA teachers have very specific questions about how they're grading. The VAPA teachers are having very specific questions about how they're grading. So I think that's gonna be at least, I will say, more than half of the document is going to be very content-specific with. And actually, tomorrow, I'm meeting with OCIPD to just refine that. There might be some that have to do with the percentage versus the rubric scale, there's questions around that too, because the rubric scale does allow for a zero, you know, and the percentage, you know, it's at a 50. So there are some questions around that. How are we using those? Can we use them concurrently in grading scales? So those are the ones that are coming up, around those areas.
Yeah, go ahead.
Board member Lopez, thank you for that question. One of the things that I'd like to also just acknowledge is, teachers have been able to and have made adjustments to their syllabi as they learn more, they get clarity, they send out notifications to parents, to students, and saying, hey, this is a shift that we're doing. We have school sites that did some shifting right before going into Thanksgiving break. We have school sites that have made some shifts now that it's second semester. We have principals that have sent out messaging to their community and saying, hey, we're learning with this too. So thank you for the flexibility that you're giving our teachers. And that's really what we want to get out there, you know, that we're here to support our teachers, we're here to support our administrators, so that they have the answers that they need, because they're the ones that are facing the parent in, at the school, asking why this, why that. So again, it's definitely a philosophical shift for us in education. Now think of parents that don't really necessarily care about The Case Against the Zero or all these other authors that I mentioned.
Then one other question. Will we be tracking the policy and how it's impacting the different student subgroups?
We're grateful for our partnership with the Office of Research and Student Outcomes. And so they will definitely, I believe, in a future meeting, when they're gonna definitely bring some data, and it will be disaggregated and we'll have a clear indication of how all of our subgroups are performing.
I have a clarifying question on the grading policy. So currently, is it that all assignments that are assigned have that two-week deadline to be submitted?
If the teacher makes it an assignment, yes, it is subject to that. If it's done in class, then it doesn't, it's not subject to that because it's done at the end of the day. However, if the student wasn't present that day, then they need to be given the chance to do the assignment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Actually, can we hear from you, maybe what your opinion has been now that the policy's been in place for a semester?
Yeah. I actually, I saw that this was on the agenda and I went ahead and talked to students that I know who go to my school, but also who go to other schools such as Wilson and Milliken. And also, I've also heard things from different teachers, just as this has been implemented. So there's people who like it and who don't. I have heard positive feedback about the two-week period. I know students who appreciate that because they have crazy schedules, or there are those who can't complete the assignments specifically on time, so that gives them a little bit of a grace period. But I think, in my case, there's been a little bit of, it hasn't been super clear. I know we had some changes in our school. At our school, I think there was some miscommunication with the grading policy and how it applies to homework, because I know they're supposed to be grading on mastery. So I think there was something stated that they inferred that homework, such as taking notes or different things like that, they didn't feel like it met that mastery requirement. So we weren't graded on that. So like for, in my experience, for my first, almost the whole first semester, I wasn't graded on homework in my AP Stats class, but now, and I know that affected the grades of students who, they may not perform their best on tests. And so there, it was like 90% tests and 10% of some other instructional work. So I know that it damaged some students' grades a little bit. Then now, starting in the second semester, they implemented back the grading based on that homework. So I know, I don't know if that's been the case with some miscommunication for all the different schools, but I know that's been my case. And like as far as the resources for all the grading policy, when were those resources first available?
So they were available starting in the summer, as Mr. Moraga mentioned on the district website. And we also had the flyer go out to all families discussing the change, the shift. We know that we had a lot of, we had a lot of principals talk about it at back-to-school night, we had teachers talking about it at back-to-school night. So it's definitely out there in terms of what's available. And I know that through our Office of, our Communication Department, they've also been sending out messaging to families, informing them of the policy and the resources.
Okay. So in my experience, and I think some students will share my experience, I really wasn't aware that these resources were available. And I know that you guys have put in hard work to make sure that the students and the teachers and the parents, that they know that these resources are there, and to learn more about the grading policy. But like for me, I really wasn't aware that these were available. So yeah, that's one other thing. Yeah, I think that's kind of the basis of my experience.
How did students at your school learn?
Yeah, I think it first came from the teachers at the end of last school year, I think probably when they first started getting it. So it was mainly through the teachers. Yeah, I, I don't really remember any other form of how we were getting the information, but it was mainly just the teachers giving us that information about the grading policy.
Can I ask you another question? So in your opinion, has it helped our students? Or has it been a bit more, because it sounds like it's been a little confusing for students? But in your opinion, do you believe that so far what we have in place helps students that first semester?
I think it depends on the student.
I think it depends on the student. Because I think overall, in the overall vision of the grading policy, yes. But I know there's, in some cases, it hasn't, because as you've mentioned, that with not grading, I'm trying to figure out how to, how to phrase this. With that two-week period, that, that kind of that grace period, I think it did give less incentive for students to do their work on time. And I know, I've just heard it from different teachers, that there's a large amount of students who are submitting a lot more late work than in years past. And then there's a lot more students who haven't done it at all. And I think, I really like the idea of grading on mastery, because you know, the whole, it's great to go to school and learn, but if you're not really learning anything and mastering it and getting those skills, then it's just, you're checking off a box. But with implementation, I know, I think it has helped some, but it also, it creates less incentive. Like I had one final, on our finals day, where there was a good amount of students who just didn't show up to the final, because they would get an automatic 45, and it wouldn't change their grade at all. So they just didn't show up. So we wanted our students to show up and even, just to try and put in that effort. But if, you know, if no matter what grade they got, it wouldn't change their grades, they just didn't show up. It's kind of taking away from that, because they're not putting in that work, they're not trying, they're not putting in that effort. And I know my experience is different, because I go to Sato, and so a lot of kids, they're very active in school. And I know there's some different school sites who, there's different circumstances for students, so it might benefit them more. But this is just my experience.
We call that gaming the system, Alana. Alana, I just want to acknowledge, thank you for the courage and the honesty. I know it, it must be hard to be put on the spot when a board member is like, but give us your opinion, tell us what the students are saying. So just thank you for the courage and for the honesty, because we need to hear this, but it's hard to be put on the spot, right, and come up with the words, right? So just a lot of appreciation for me, for, for the courage that you're showing.
And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak about it and to, but input. And I'm so very grateful for you guys for all the input that you're gathering from the teachers and, and all those others to, to continue to work on this grading policy. So thank you.
So I normally just lean over to the left of my right if I have a question or want to give a comment. But I was telling my fellow board member here before this topic started, I was saying, this topic is absolutely dependent upon your input. This is the real reason why we needed a student board member, because we wanted to get an in-the-field perspective of some of the larger decisions that we make. And so we just really, obviously you know how much I appreciate your, your input. So thank you, thank you for that. The one thing that I wanted to talk about when, about today's presentation, this is probably more of an, you've heard me use this term, ericism than it is about the district, is that I have become sometimes almost too focused on the outcomes and forget about the journey. I, I forget about the processes put into getting to these moments. And so unfortunately, the day that we voted this policy in, I had done all the work and I was ready to present, and then I got a brand-new roommate that, that day, as my wife was nine months pregnant. So obviously we had a, a baby that day, and I wasn't able to be present. But all things considered, one of the things that had always been at the forefront of my thoughts when it came to this topic was that topic of mastery. And how this component of it is really just a tool to make sure that people are retaining information and using that for the longevity of their lives. So when we talk about these grades, yes, we understand them as a tool that holds our classrooms accountable, that holds our campuses accountable. But ultimately, it's really just the tool to help us, or help, it's just a tool to remind us of the importance of helping them retain this information for the long haul, right? And so, and we see that on those SBAQ scores, et cetera. And so as, yes, this is important, I'm probably more interested in seeing these grades and how they're going to impact some of those long-term metrics like our SBAQ scores, et cetera. But all things considered, I appreciate you guys really talking about all of the efforts that have gone into not only formulating this policy, but the rollout and how it's impacted our campuses. So thank you.
But first of all, an observation. You know, when we adopted the equity and excellence policy, I thought, well, that's very highfalutin'. How are we going to do that? And then we, and that was easy compared to the grading policy, because the grading policy was so important for people's lives and, and how we do things. But really, it's the logical extension of the excellence and equity policy. I mean, that's the implementation of that. And it's a wonderful message to, to send that, hey, if you go to school here, we believe in excellence, we believe in equity, and you've got to show us that. And we're going to show you how we're going to do that. The, so, so taking this on, and when I first heard about it, and I started to get contents, information from my constituents, I thought, this is impossible. You know, that, you know, nobody said, this is great. You know, nobody said anything more than, what are you trying to do here? You know, this, this doesn't make any sense. But you're doing this one bite at a time. You know, it's just getting better and better. I've watched it over the year, and it's extraordinary, the progress that's been made and that people are kind of coming around a little bit and understanding that what you're trying to do. And it, no, it's not easy, and there will be people that will gain the system, and there will be people that are saying, how, how can I, what can I get out of this, as opposed to just doing it. And so you're to be complimented for, for, for taking this on. And I know that there are thorny questions. The students with disabilities question is, is really tough. You know, it's almost like a completely different world. And, and yet you're, you're really to be complimented for all that you're doing. There is a resource guide, and, and it's, keeps me improved. Is that right?
Yes. So what we're working on is a document with all the feedback, ideas, adjustments that need to be made now this semester. That's something that we want to deploy to the field very, very quickly. Mr. Samuel just gave me a deadline for two to three weeks, so we'll stick to that. We'll get it out there.
Yeah, okay.
No, no, there's no two-week extension to this.
Yeah, you have two weeks to do that, right? And Mr. Madrigal, you said at the beginning, you mentioned two books that you thought were important, besides The Grading for Equity book by Mr. Feldman. Can you tell me the names of those two books again, and the authors?
Yes, absolutely. So the first one is The Case Against the Zero by Douglas Reeves. And the other is On Your Mark: Challenging the Conventions of Grading and Reporting. And that one is by Thomas Guskey.
Thomas Duffy?
Guskey.
Do you spell it for me, please? Okay. Well, it's, it's a work in progress, obviously, but, but getting better. And you're, I, I'm, I'm so pleased to hear this presentation, because if you would have said in September, okay, we're not going to report to you, I would have thought, forget this, you know, this. But you're working through it. So you're to be congratulated for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank Alana for participating and maybe saying some things that might have been tough for us to hear. But I also want to thank you for acknowledging that it's a learning process, that it's not, you know, we had it all figured out from day one, that we're taking into consideration the teacher voices. I also like the acknowledgement that we have very hard-working teachers, because this is something we know, and that's indisputable. Okay, so if there are no further questions or comments, I think we'll move on. Thank you very much, and we look forward to hearing the next installment. Yes?
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So next on our agenda, for new business, we have 16.1, Correction to 2025-2026 Calendar for the Traditional School Year.
Move for approval.
Second. Any discussion on that? I'll have our board secretary take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And student member Arroyo, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now we're at report of board members, and we will start with Alana.
Okay. So last Tuesday, I was able to attend the inaugural district-wide employee celebration. So this was a night where our district honored and recognized different people apart of our district. We, there were six retiring staff members, 22 staff members of the district who received their doctorates this year. I believe four colleagues outside of the district who were kind of recognized for their outstanding achievement. So it was a wonderful evening where we were able just to, to gather and to gather in gratitude and celebrate these key people in our district and in our community. So a special thanks to all those who put on the event, as well as those who were, were honored and recognized. And then this kind of just goes on to, I'd like to extend a thank to you to all those who work in our district as staff or, or teachers or in, in incapacity. You all work so hard and put in so much effort to make this district the best that it can be. So I don't think we say it enough. So thank you so much.
So right. Mr. Miller?
Thank you. And so first off, obviously, we know that excellence is one of our values here at the Long Beach Unified School District. But I think that one that is probably understood but not mentioned enough is also affirmation, right? And so to just applaud those and show them how much we value other efforts has been something that I've recognized now being on this side of the Long Beach Unified School District, is a large part of what we do and how we do it. And so I was very disappointed that I was unable to make the event, what was that, last week, two weeks ago? Last week?
Yeah.
But all things considered, I did hear that it was a grand time, to say the least. And so I just wanted to also send my congratulations to all that were awarded, the retirees, et cetera, as I truly, truly value all of the efforts that it takes to support our young people in the system. First, I just wanted to thank everybody for being in attendance and supporting the MLK Day Parade on, what was that, January 17th that was? Was a great time. Again, once again, it's a, a family holiday in our household. This year was the first time that little EJ got to attend. It was really good to see not only the folks from the administrative side of house participating in this community event, but as we walked to our spot in the parade, I ironically was walking with Jill and Tiffany, I jokingly asked them the question. I was like, what percentage of this parade do you think is the Long Beach Unified School District? And she was like, I don't know, but it's sure a lot. And I must say, there was, there was definitely a lot of our campuses, our elementary schools, even folks who influence our system, right, to our sixth district council representative, to Sharon Diggs Jackson. I mean, it's, it's just one of those events that is fantastic, and it's great for just all of us to be in fellowship. And so every time I attend, I'm very appreciative. And so I just wanted to, once again, thank everybody for their efforts, for putting that together, from the person driving the truck to the booth that we had, et cetera. So now, once again, thank you. And last, but definitely not least, I'm sure, we've already talked about it, but I'll hint towards it again, Happy Black History Month. In this time of our country, where there are folks in leadership who are, have undervalued other communities, it's, it's important that we, as a system, continue to provide both the affirmation but recognition of important communities to our system, in particular, the black community, as not only are they 13% of our student population, but more importantly, they have been a valuable part to the commitments that we have as this district, as we're being both one built in excellence and academic performance. And so, all things considered, as an African-American man who not only loves this city, loves my people, I love this district as well. And so I am very proud that we, as a district, continue to stand and honor both Black History Month, but more importantly, all communities that have felt underrepresented. And I ask and implore the district that we continue to do so. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yeah, I think Mr. Miller and Ms. Arroyo covered it. So ditto on the awards, retirement, doctoral celebration, Board Member Arroyo. Ditto on the MLK Junior Parade, Mr. Miller. And then ditto on Black History Month. The only thing I would add, in the spirit of what Alana and Eric shared, is that yes, absolutely, Black History Month is about celebrating and affirming our communities. But I think it's also a call to action for the work that still remains to be done in and with our communities. So real quick, I met with the Teachers Association of Long Beach SPED Task Force, and had an opportunity to hear and, and listen and learn from our teachers in special education, and just wanted to lift up that I did have a follow-up conversation with Dr. Baker and with Dr. Solzav Alderama about some of the things that were shared. And so you will be hearing more about the work that we're doing at upcoming board workshop, in terms of CEC recommendations, in terms of, you heard a little bit about some of the professional development today. So I'm looking forward to getting some updates with regards to how we best support our team to ensure student success. I'm, I'm going to speak a little bit here. I hope it doesn't come off off the cuff. We had some public comment, in the spirit of what you just shared tonight, Mr. Miller. So I'll first say, I oppose all and any mass deportation policies in our country. And, and we had some folks that reminded us that there are other students that are also experiencing increased sense of vulnerability given to federal administration. And I'll just call it out, it's specific leadership. So I would encourage our other electeds in our city and in our region to also stand firm and tall, and our systems leaders, with our most vulnerable and currently harmed communities, including our immigrant community, specifically our immigrant community. But in addition, I would say this, and you know what, let me say a couple more things. Kudos to Taub. I don't know if anyone caught, Taub did a press release, them also affirming with their commitment to standing with our immigrant students and, and families and communities. And kudos to our executive leadership team for double-downing and sending out communications, working on resources, in communication with our school sites, with our teachers, at every and all level, affirming that commitment. So I don't want that to, to go unnoticed. But as we know, policies can undo, or attempt to undo, the great work that our district has been doing. So this, this is what I'll Thank you for folks that showed up in their public comments to talk about the need to affirm our commitment to stand with our LBGTQ plus students, families, and communities. Thank you to our DI- Thank you to our DI teachers that came here asking us to continue supporting our multilingual learners, our emerging bilinguals. But I want to say this, I think it's a call to action. So if we're going to stand tall and firm on supporting one group of students and family and community members, then we need to stand tall and firm in supporting all students, but particularly, particularly our most underserved and our most vulnerable students. So I would encourage members of the public that came today, beyond thanking you for coming, to check out our board meeting from November after our presidential elections, because myself and our board chair and our superintendent affirmed that commitment to all of our students. And so I don't think this is an either/or. I also don't think it's an and, but I also think it's important to call out and name the specific groups of students, the specific subgroups of students, and our communities. So when we say, and when I say, and again, our board president and our superintendent shared it, so check out our board reports from that November meeting, that we are standing in solidarity with our students and families, it's not at the exclusion of all of our other students. So I think it would be important, Madam Chair, our superintendent, to, you know, do some public statement on behalf of all of our students, because the last thing we want is for certain segments of our community to think, well, look, they're standing with these students. We've affirmed our commitment to black student success, and that means black student well-being, that means black student safety, that means black family well-being, black family safety, community safety. And so I know that we have a, in the queue, Jeff, an update to our immigration resolutions and policies, so might not be a bad time to revisit just some language about affirming our commitment to all of our student success, but call out those groups that are specifically being targeted, that are specifically being harmed, not just by rhetoric, we're talking about policies here, that directly impact our ability to uphold our vision, our goals, our programs, our services anchored in this excellence and equity policy that has been referenced here. So I am asking our community, especially those that have come to public comment because of the effort that it takes, to be there for all students. And as you eloquently stated, the beautiful communication that our district had, it's a long battle here. It's not going to be just about showing up one time. It's going to be about showing up for the other students when they don't have someone speaking up for them, out of fear, out of fear of retaliation, out of fear of coming out to a school to drop off children at one of our schools, which is supposed to be one of the most safest and sacred places, or at a hospital, or at a church, because they feel that federal officials are going to target them in and around our schools. So it's time, call to action. If we're going to save public education and all the great things in it, acknowledging that we can do better, we have to come together collectively and be there all the time for all students, and not just throw around terms like equity when it's convenient, when it's affecting me personally, or my student, or my family, or my community. So if we're going to save this thing that we call public education, that we've all highlighted, that's a great equalizer for our most underserved, most vulnerable, traditionally underserved communities, then we have to double down collectively and look at those policies, look at those funding streams, look at the rhetoric that's causing damage and undoing and undermining all the work that we've committed to do. And so it's a call to action to our community members, in the spirit of solidarity, that let's come out, but let's come out for all students all the time. That's my report.
Thank you. It's interesting you say, let's come out for all students.
Pun intended.
Pun intended. What I, what I hear you saying is, instead of talking about it, we have to be about it, just to borrow something from Mr. Samuels. Sorry about that, but yes, thank you. And I, I think you're absolutely right, we have to stand up for our most vulnerable students, and it's not a one-time deal, it's something we're going to recommit to as often as we can, because that's an important message for us to convey. Mr. Otto?
Well, thank you, Dr. Benitez, for your words, your inspirational words, because I think that you hit the nail on the head. This is not going to be a one-time event, this is the beginning of a long fight. Back in September, when I heard that if the president was elected, who got elected, that he wanted to do away with the Department of Education, I researched that and said, oh, he can't do that. You know, Congress, Congress is involved in that, and yet it's at play. And lots of things are at play right now that I never expected to be at play, but it just tells me that what's going on is a very long fight, and that it's going to require a lot of people to stand up and devote a significant amount of time to making sure that public education is available to all the students in our community, and that we, and they need to know that we're standing up for them. The materials that we produced, that the district produced and shared with us last week, or was it two weeks ago, we got copies of it, I made a bunch of copies of it and gave it out to people who were, wondered what we were doing. And it certainly saved my voice a little bit, because I'd say, here, read this, and you'll have a good idea, and they'll see that we are, in fact, one going forward with this very difficult time and what needs to be done. And so it's a, it is a call to action, and it is a call to ongoing action on our part. The one specific thing I wanted to mention that is not political is that I spent a lovely morning at Bryant Elementary School with Principal Miller Bailey, where they were doing ground education. And it was good to see him again, he's been a little rough spot illness-wise, but there he was, ground education, they've done a raised bed garden, they gave food to the third graders to take home. The ground education is now in thirty Long Beach elementary schools, they do sixteen thousand students monthly, they do, they've done two thousand nature-based education things, and this is part of our facilities work and what we're doing. And I was very proud to be able to be a part of it and to see the pride that the ground education people in particular, but the people at school were showing too because of, that this was going on. So we've got a lot of work to do. It's important work, and it's good to see the good things that the district's doing. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez?
Thank you. Well, I attended Jordan's Choice Night, and I really enjoyed the campus, beautiful campus. I enjoyed speaking with students and connecting with staff, and I do want to acknowledge some of the students who took the time to speak to me and my husband about their music program, Joseline Sanchez Martinez, Chance Brown, Eduardo Hernandez, and Precious Omalafe. I also like to thank the students who were so great in explaining the school's pathways, Brian Arteaga, Angelis Barrera, Gisele Jimenez, and Karri Saros, I'm sorry, Saros. You were all very impressive and incredibly articulate, and you did an amazing job, students, great in representing Jordan High School. And like some of my colleagues, I too participated in the MLK Parade, and like always, it was a great event with great participation and a great way to honor such an iconic figure. And then I attended two community meetings, the April Park Foundation meeting, where the team there discussed the resources, referrals, safe passage, and services that they're offering the North Long Beach community. And I attended the West Long Beach Community Meeting, where residents learned that air monitoring had detected elevated concentrations of methyl bromide in the area. And of course, this was not an easy meeting to sit through, since we have students attending schools and employees on the west side, but I am looking forward to seeing and attending the next meetings planned. I hope that the county is planning additional meetings to provide us with some kind of a plan to resolve this problem. I do want to send a shout out to the staff who attended and a plant, Sankofa Village. Like always, great night, wonderful way to engage parents and create a space for community building. And like my colleagues, I also attended, I had the honor of attending the doctoral celebration, where educators in the district who earned their doctoral degrees were recognized. Congratulations to each and every one of you. We have one here in the room. Congratulations, Dr. Tuall, and I thank everyone, we are so proud of each and every one of you. And then finally, like Mr. Miller, I too want to congratulate Sophia Griffith for her retirement. Thank you, Ms. Griffith, for positively impacting the lives of thousands in our district. You are such a great role model. I know I've looked up to you in a lot of the work that you've done, and you will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add to the MLK Parade that we had our representatives from our, our Black Excellence part of the district, and they were participating in the community event afterwards, and it was so nice to have them at the community event, so that people know what's happening in the district and how we are supporting our students of color. And then also, just to add to our recognition ceremony, ceremony of our retirees, awardees, and doctoral degrees or whatever, thank you to everyone who made that event so special. It was nice to be at an event where we are just there honoring others. That was really nice. Also something, I don't know if, I think you missed it, but the groundbreaking ceremony for Washington, Mr. Miller.
Right.
Right? You were there, well, your turn is over, but, but no, Mr. Miller was fabulous at the, I'm, I'm kind of sad that you forgot about that. I mean, he really was fabulous at that event, our David Miranda, our staff, Chantel, who made the event special, providing music, and there were, there were renderings of what the finished product is going to look like. It was very exciting. So thank you to everyone who made that event special. And then also, last week, were our symphony field trips, our fourth and fifth graders. It is the ninetieth season of our symphony, so congratulations for our Long Beach Symphony. And also, thank you to the Linda Gunn Music Education Foundation. I had the privilege of spending the morning with her, and we, we sat and watched one of the performances, just by the numbers, it was over the course of two days, it was four concerts, it was twelve thousand fourth and fifth graders. So you have, each day, you have three thousand students coming in, watching a performance. As they exit, three thousand more students coming, so we have six thousand students on two days. We bring back Mr. Petrie to help facilitate that whole process, it's amazing. And we also had one hundred of our high school students, fifty on one day, fifty on another day, sitting side by side in the orchestra, playing with them. It was impressive, very well received by the kids, especially when Darth Vader came out, especially when the, you know, the actors with the lightsabers, and there was a ballet troupe that came out at one point. The, the excitement of the kids when the orchestra would, would start a song and they recognized that music, like from Harry Potter or something, just the excitement of the kids, it was fabulous. We sat in the back, it's the best place to sit, when you're in an auditorium, or, yeah, a theater full of kids, it's really fun. And then there's been a lot of talk about how I went to Fresno to attend a conference on student outcome-focused governance. So I have a brief report, I just want to go over some things from that conference. One of the things we talked about was how to include students in what we do. So one thing that we're going to be doing as a board is presenting at community meetings, and Alana, I'm going to throw it out there, we're probably going to have you help us as a student presenter when we start having these community meetings. And then what I learned from a cohort from Phoenix, they, I met a few people, they're, they're from K, yeah, K eight district, they include students in a student congress. That student congress came up with a student bill of rights. They also do something where, for the parent-teacher conferences, they're student-led. So the parents come in, they sit down with the teacher, the students say, here's where I'm at, this is what I'm doing, this is what I need, that type of thing. Fabulous, fabulous way to center the students. I know, it's incredible, let's see, well, and then, you know, above all, student outcomes don't change unless adult behaviors change. And so what I learned was my part in that, and how if I change my behavior, that will impact what we do as a group. It's a wonderful reminder. And then, lastly, I just want to acknowledge our, not ours, I mean, it's everybody's Black History Month, and there are many ways to celebrate. So I'm going to suggest that, and extend an invitation to attend our Black History Celebration at Jordan, I believe that's February twenty-fifth at six P M. So look into that, that's going to be a very nice event. And now I will hand it over to our superintendent.
Great, thank you. Tonight, I'm going to feature just a few celebrations for schools and a couple announcements, and then I'd like to read an affirmation and commitment to our community. The first is, we recently had a group of students from Renaissance High School with their teacher, Mr. Tran, attend the Sundance Film Festival, which was just an amazing opportunity that came to them. And I watched them on social media, and we'll have lots to hear from them about their experience, but they were on some very elite stages, experiencing what it is like to see behind-the-scenes filmmaking and all that goes into that in the real world, so wonderful opportunity for them. Also, Jordan High School, for the first time in their school history, their girls' water polo made it to CIF playoffs, and while they lost in the first round, it is the first time in history. So something for them to be really, really proud of, they're being celebrated at their school, and I said, I'm shouting you out tonight, because that is a wonderful accomplishment for them. And then two announcements, we have our upcoming teacher and administrative recruitment night at Browning High School on February twelfth at five o'clock. There's information on our website about how to sign up and to become involved and to get information about that. And then lastly, our high school choice and online application takes place between February seventh and February twenty-first. There is a lot of information on high school choice on our website as well. And I just want to thank all of the students and staff who participated in site nights. You heard Ms. Lopez speak about her experience at Jordan. I too was out and about experiencing site nights and loved the opportunity to talk to students who are so proud of their school and have a story to tell, especially from student to student. It means a lot to have students talking to other students. And so tonight, I'd like to actually close with an affirmation and commitment to our community that was first issued on November eighth. I'm reminded tonight, as we think about the fragileness of our community in this time, the fears that are happening for people, especially marginalized people and those who have been targeted. And so this was issued November eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and tonight I'm reminded how often we need to affirm our community. So let me read, on behalf of Long Beach Unified School District, we wrote to students, parents, caregivers, and community. This was in anticipation of the transition in government. This was in anticipation of the transition in government. We move forward together guided by our Board of Education's Vision 2035 and our district's strategic plan, creating a better future together. Those, though these aspirations, excuse me, through these aspirations and plan, we affirm our deep commitment to our students, families and community. Our core principles are unwavering. Students are at the heart of everything we do. We will continue to nurture students' growth, support their learning and empower them to thrive in school and beyond. With compassion and conviction, adults in our system stand firmly with students and families who are furthest from justice and opportunity, knowing that when we lead for them, we create a stronger, more inclusive environment for everyone. To our Black newcomer and immigrant youth, our LGBTQ plus youth, our students with disabilities, our students experiencing housing insecurity and other youth facing systemic inequities, we stand with you and for you. We are here to ensure you succeed inside and outside the classroom, to encourage you to dream big and feel fully supported. Our commitment to excellence and equity inspires our work every day. Our Vision 2035 graduate, adult and system portraits shape a community rooted in care, mutual respect and shared aspirations. Guided by these values, we work to make our schools safe, supportive spaces where students feel valued, cared for and empowered to be their authentic selves. Let us continue fostering an environment of compassion, encouragement and high expectations for all students and one another. We are deeply grateful for partnering with our community and look forward to a bright, prosperous future for every learner in our care. Since November eighth, 2024, nothing has changed. And so, I'm reminded of the need to continue to reaffirm those in our community who are feeling harm and feeling worried with these words, and we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Ms. Lopez, just if we can end with a moment of silence in honor of the student at Cabrillo High School who passed away a few weeks ago.
Well, I'm wondering if I should do that at the very end or I, well, you know what, let's, let's take a moment of silence. It's all, you know what, that's always a tough, that's always tough when we lose a student, and it does happen. I, I feel particularly touched because that's my maiden name. It was mine, so, you know, that's, that's a tough one. So, let's take a moment of silence for that student before we end our meeting. Thank you. So, as we, as we adjourn, I, I also want to include a statement of affirmation. And here at Long Beach Unified, we're, we're committed to serving and protecting every student regardless of their gender identity, sexual orientation, regardless of background, race or how they arrived in this country. Education is a constitutional right. School districts are legally required to provide a free, high-quality, public education to every child without exception. Our board policy in response to immigration enforcement reinforces this commitment. It's aligned with the U.S. Constitution, California state law and the California Education Code, ensuring that all students feel safe, valued and supported. Our schools remain safe spaces with clear policies and protections in place. Long Beach Unified is stronger because of our diversity. To our immigrant students and families, you belong here. To our families of different sexual orientations or, or neurodiversity, you belong here. We stand with you and we will continue to protect and support you. Thank you, everyone. Unless there's an objection, we will adjourn the meeting. Good night.